All right, good evening. Tonight is the July 31st, 2023 Select Board Meeting for Lakeville. We've got members Fabi, Carbone, and Day President, along with Town Administrator Art Sky. And we'll open it up with Select Board Announcements first. So Treasury or Tax Collector would like to remind residents that real estate and personal property tax bills are due August 1st, 2023, tomorrow. If you have any questions, please contact their office at 508-946-0081. The Lakeville Arts Council...
Eight-eight-zero-one.
What did I say?
Zero-zero-eight-one.
That's eight-eight-zero-one, thank you. The Lakeville Arts Council's last summer concert is August 1st from 6:00 to 8:00 p.m. at the Center Stage located at the Old Town House Building to Precinct Street. In case of rain, the concert will be moved two days later on the Thursday of the week. For additional information, please visit www.lakevilleartscouncilma.org/concerts. And like always, if you've ever wanted to volunteer on a Commissioner Committee, the town has vacancies on the Conservation Committee, Cable Advisory Committee, Capital Expenditure Committee, Zoning Board of Appeals, Energy Advisory Committee, and the Open Space Committee. To apply, please visit the town's website. On the Town Clerk's page, there is a volunteer form there. Any other comments on those items or other announcements we'd like to make tonight?
No comments.
Okay, and move on to Town Administrator announcements.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I have a bit of a list here, hopefully not too long. The Asawamstead Elementary School Project is proceeding on schedule. The OPM is leading weekly coordination meetings, which I've been attending. A first major shipment is due to arrive next week, and as of today, that's still the case. The project's schedule anticipates installing windows in priority areas ahead of the school year. There'll be some disruption, which the school district is working with the OPM to minimize. The entire project is scheduled to be completed before the end of October. I had a number of conversations, by the way, with the school administration today about they need to get out there a little more and provide a little more information to the public about what's going on, and they assured me that they will, when the shipment, when they have cooperation with the shipment, they'll be posting something.
That'd be great, yeah. If I could just interrupt for a moment, like if they can take extra time, too, questions I've gotten are, like, when the kids go back, even if the project's not done, is all the asbestos removal done, certified, environmental clearances are given, etc.?
The plan is to do all the asbestos removal first before they even... So it's kind of like doing a window, cleaning that out, and doing all... That's why, if you look around the building now, all you see is plywood everywhere where the windows were.
Yeah, okay, awesome, thank you.
Can we ask more questions, or do you want to wait until we end on that one?
No, go ahead, if you'd like.
So, I know that Lorraine had asked for a copy of the contract, and it seems a little objective to me in the substantial completion department, but who's the one that actually makes that decision? What's substantial?
The OPM.
Okay, how, what, um, what input does, let's say, Nate Darling, our building commissioner, have?
The definition of substantial completion requires that the, um, that the CO is done, the certification is completed, and so on, so, I mean, it's a, I think input is key to move to that, to be able to do that. The OPM won't decide on his own, yeah, it's done, even though they don't have a CO. Just, that would not be acceptable to the group.
Okay, um, does a certificate of, like, occupancy have to be given for partial construction? Because that would come from our building commissioner as well, right?
There's several steps along the way. He's gonna have to certify that the hazmat mitigation is complete, and provide the testing information to do that before they even allow people in the building. Once they, other than workers, yeah. Once they have the, uh, let's say, once that's done and in place, which should be within the next few days, what I understand, or this week. I have a meeting with them tomorrow, by the way, which I'll report back to you on the update, which I've been doing every week. But once they have that certified, then they'll be getting, then they'll be getting in there, replacing the windows, and allowed to start to have, allowed to start having kids in there. Teachers first, and kids. So it'll be several steps along the way. And then the final CO would be when the project's done, certify that everything's completed. And there's actually, um, a fire chief has a role in that as well, because of the alarm systems and the bells, you know, the bell system and all that stuff, too. That's, that's all tied into the window and door installations. And, you know, bear in mind also that it's not just windows, it's doors. And, um, so, as they call them storefronts, the, um, there are several storefronts they're calling, which is the whole assembly where the doors and the windows are all, like, there. Those will almost definitely not be in any of them by, by the time school starts, because they're in the second shipment for the line, for the most part. So, um, they'll be, you know, they, I think I've shared with you all the priority areas. It's a little bit, I'm gonna be totally transparent, it's a little bit challenging for me, because I, in my mind, the school district ought to be providing this information to the, to its community and saying, this is what's going on, and I'm happy to provide it to you all. I'd be happy to post it on the website, if, you know, honestly, but I just feel like, I feel like it's really, the school district stopped to do that, if that's what I've been trying to push them to do.
So my concern is, um, I think the anticipated arrival date for windows, I thought you told us was August 8th and 9th.
Yeah, it's the first shipment, and it says another one will be a week later.
So where...
They were, they're shipping on the 3rd or the 4th, which, and, you know, the, the planet, the, I, I don't, I don't know the whole...
Yeah, I'm still extremely caught, you know, um, concerned that the building, I, I hope everything goes well. I know their role, their, their intent is to have it perfectly ready, so the first window the day it hits can start going in, but I...
So this was a conscious trade-off that was made, because if you recall, there was talk about doing it in '24.
Yep.
And then it became possible to get, starting the windows now.
Yep.
Never were the windows gonna come in early enough now that you could just get it done during the summer.
Right.
There's always gonna be that bleed over.
Right, there was always gonna be the bleed over, but we didn't have, um, I thought at the time they had, they were going to select windows that they knew that were, that they could get in stock. So I guess my concern is, at what point do we call it a no-go to get kids into the school, or if that's our decision, the school department's decision?
It's our decision, I mean, it's our decision from a regulatory standpoint. Right now, kids can't be in that school, because it's, it's, it's covered by plywood, it wasn't covered by plywood, and it still, and has, but has not been certified.
Right, and I guess this is also a public, um, request to the school committee and the administration, in case, I mean, we could have bad weather, we could have an early hurricane, we could have anything, I think someone should be making a plan for where these kids are gonna go to school. We're cutting it really close with, I mean, if the windows get here on the 8th and the 9th, the kids going back to school, that's what, three weeks?
Should we make a request then, as part of what Ari said, to say, hey, District, give us a, where's your opening, opening to building plan?
Right.
And what's your contingency?
Yeah, I mean, I, I feel, at the beginning of this process, I was really okay with, you know, like, those last few items being done through September and October. We always knew the whole project wouldn't be done before the kids went back to school, but, I mean, right now, I, I see teachers scrambling, because they usually go in a couple last weeks of the summer, and I don't see that happening either, so I have no idea what the first day of school looks like there.
I, um, I understand, and I, to a certain degree, share your concern. I, I think the OPM is doing a real solid job of being very straightforward with me about what's going on, and telling us what, what, and he's, he's confident that they're gonna make the timeline that they set out.
Yeah, I mean, it's pretty specific.
Yeah, it's pretty specific, but that being said, is there a risk? Absolutely. And I'll be happy to carry the, you know, the board's concerns to the, to the meeting tomorrow and say, listen, you guys gotta make sure you're real solid on this, and, you know, and have a contingency plan in place, just in case.
Yeah.
I will absolutely do that.
Um, I just, that would make me feel comfortable.
Does the superintendent participate in that tomorrow?
Um, he, he told me specifically he's going tomorrow.
Oh, fantastic, so perhaps he can put together, you know, what the opening looks like, and, you know, what are the contingencies that would be...
What I'll do to you tonight, before I, before my head hits the pillow tonight, I'll send him an email, so he can, in the morning, just to think about this and what he wants to say, instead of dropping it with him on, at the meeting.
Yeah, I mean, and you know what? Even if the answer doesn't come tomorrow, I just really feel like, you know, because we're responsible, you know, we oversee that building, too.
They, they really need to communicate with the public about what's going on here. The only posting I've seen, um, thus far was a brief posting in June on the Asawamstead School website that said, um, uh, you know, schools are gonna be closed for the summer because they're doing these renovations, it's gonna be great, you know, based on, paraphrased, something like that. Um, I think there was some discussion during school committee meetings, some which honestly, I would say have not, probably not been helpful, because there's been some, there was, at one point, I believe there was something that said that, like, you know, we're gonna do everything, getting it done this summer, and that was never gonna happen.
That was never gonna happen.
It was never going to happen, there's no way in this, in that contract, when you have effective, when you have, you know, work beginning in late June, this thing was gonna happen by then.
Right.
Physically impossible, so, um, you know, and that, that's unfortunate, but...
I mean, I also, you know, and again, this is like, we're going into worst-case scenario, let's say it's delayed by a couple of weeks for when the kids can get in, I mean, uh, you know, the school department is not giving out free passes, they'll make the kids make it up, so, you know?
I hear, I hear.
And, and we can't, they, I, I guess with doors, they could, you know, I guess, but I don't know, I don't know what's going on over there, so, and I guess that's part of my, my worry, too, is...
It is possible, and I'm not saying they're gonna do this, I've, I'm speculating here, because it, like, we have right now speculation, but, um, I went through, um, in my prior gig, a, um, windows and door projects on a very much larger school, and what they, they ended up pulling the windows and found out last minute that the windows weren't, the new windows weren't available, and so they, and at the time, there was kind of those cloudy windows that, you know, so they put in dins glass instead, and they, and they put that, and that gave enough light for the case to function, not ideal in any, by any means.
Right.
And I don't think that's in the plan here, because, right, they already have, you know, they already have plywood in, on all the windows now, so, you know, this, the fact that they put in plywood tells me they're pretty confident that they're gonna get their schedule, but, yeah.
What is the official start of, yeah, start of the school year this year, do we know?
August 29th, I believe, or something, 20th, 30th for kids, for kids.
Twenty, uh, okay, that, yeah, that's a Tuesday, okay.
I think it's like 30th, maybe? I looked it up the other day.
So we're basically looking at three or four weeks before kids are supposed to be back.
Right, and I mean, the, to, to, to their point, the windows are all prepped, at this point, just popping them in. So, you know, because they're already cleaned out mitigating, there's pop them in, caulk them, and they're in, and, uh, secure them in, and so those should go relatively quickly. But, um, again, doors won't be dealt with, and, you know, which is probably okay, probably still function, and, um, it'll still be a construction zone, things happening, you know, they're gonna, they, they, the contractor is committed to doing the work after hours, but there's still gonna be work happening, so...
The only other thing I might suggest, if it's not already taking place, is if the building commissioner and the fire chief or his deputy are, maybe we could cut to the chase and have them there, not ahead of time, but so that we're not waiting on them to, and I know they'll do, these are two people that'll do anything to get the, to get, you know, whatever, but...
So by the way, your concern a little bit on that is that the, um, business manager has been in direct contact with both the fire chief and the, and the union and Mike, and is just trying to work that, just trying to be proactive to get them on board and ready to go.
Yeah.
So, you know, they're not ready to go yet, but they will be soon, so...
Yeah, I mean, I know those two people, if they get the word on Friday, and either one of them has plans on a Saturday, they'll cancel their plans to do it, you know, but I just wanna be sure they're aware, so that they can make that...
So those conversations aren't happening.
Okay.
All right?
Okay.
Should I keep going? That was one.
That was one.
We have one, two, three, four, five, six, seven to go.
All right.
All right. Principal construction on the Gamash Playground took place last week. There's still site work remaining before the facility will be ready for public use. There is sufficient funding in the project budget for the finishing work. DPW and the Park Commissioner are coordinating on the scope and approach. Our OPM is preparing construction documents for the New Fields Project. The parking lot reconstruction should be ready to go to bid in August. Staff is also working with the Park Commission to develop a plan for Clear Pond Park. We're preparing an estimate for a site survey and a scope of work, which will, which will bring you to the board to propose to be funded through the ARPA money, so...
I have a question on the New Fields, I got a couple of parents asking if they'll still tentatively be open for fall soccer season, or...
Unlikely.
Is it unlikely?
Unlikely.
Okay.
I think so, yeah. Basically, the, the plan that Parks Commission gave us was insufficient to go to bid with. It was, um, hand-drawn, it wasn't a schematic design, didn't deal with the drainage issues or the grading issues, or any of that stuff, so we had to bring in an engineer to do a survey. We got schematic design back last week, and now the OPM is preparing the, um, the, the bid specs, so they're gonna go out, so you figure the award it, you know, if we're lucky, award sometime September, August, September, and then, you know, and then it takes some time for, for, unless a contractor, you know, is, is really, has nothing else to do...
Not a good sign.
Yeah, you have to, you know, they have to come in and get to work, so, yeah.
Is this all stuck?
Yeah, okay.
Okay. Uh, the access agreement to install the guard rail on the Town and Property in Kenneth Wells Drive has been signed. Tac Vega is informing that their contractors ordered the materials, expects to be on-site doing the work in August, mid-August, so that's good. I've been working with Middleborough Gas and Electric for a while now, I think, um, some of you are familiar with this, to develop a plan to install electric vehicle chargers for public use. The two locations currently under consideration are Town Hall and Loom Pond Lodge. The, uh, project will be funded through a grant, and MG&E will maintain the equipment after it's been installed. MG&E's staff is tentatively agreed to attend the August 21st Select Board Meeting to discuss the proposal. Two petition articles, which were approved by town meeting, are awaiting action in the legislature. An update on the recall provision is item seven tonight. I also thought it'd be worth mentioning that the other article, which expands the Select Board to five members, is pending in the House of Representatives. I spoke with Nancy LaFave last week regarding the library board's plans in response to Jim Viveras's announced departure as library director, who will miss very much. The board is developing an interim plan and will decide on the composition of the search committee at its next meeting. I promised to offer whatever assistance they need to manage the transition, assist with the search process, they'll be in touch with us as to who's, what, they're only gonna want a board member or a town administrator, some type of design need from us probably to serve on the, when that letter comes, we'll be able to talk about it. Next regular meeting of the Select Board will be, uh, 6:00 p.m. on August 21st at the Lakeville Police Station. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Any other questions for Ari before moving on? No? Okay, I'll move to item three. Discuss some possible vote to approve the Select Board minutes of June 26, 2023. Did anybody have any corrections? Well, first, does everybody have a chance to look at them, and do you have any corrections you'd like made?
I don't have any corrections, but you ate at Tracy for putting this one together.
Yeah. Yes.
I'm sorry.
That was, you set the bar a bit too high there, Tracy.
Yeah.
Oh, I'll make a motion to approve the Select Board minutes of June 26, um, 2023 as presented.
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, passing the unanimous, thank you. Uh, let's see, did John join? John, uh, would you mind going first? Heard you'd like to perhaps get out a little early.
Can you get him up, or you have to use your remote?
Um, come up in case, you know, we got questions, and then Ari and yourself can walk us through this. Let me page through my 15 pages of meeting notes.
What are we on, what number?
Number five.
For what we're familiar, this was talked with discussed at the executive session...
Page 11 in the packet.
This dated, I remember, prior executive session a few weeks ago.
Mm-hmm.
All right, um, do you have any questions for John or Ari specifically on this? It looks like we'll be expected to see before us, I believe.
I mean, the only question that I would have, or, it's not so much a question, but a request, um, just for the public as to, you know, how this came, you know, for clarity. If you could just take a moment and explain, um, you know, why this is in front of us today?
Sure, um, so I was, um, approached by a couple of members of the union about, um, some of the pay rates and disparities between part-time and full-time people, uh, full-time union employees, um, and so, uh, this is sort of a result of that, as well as, um, some other previously discussed, um, changes for Jen Jewell, who was mentioned in here. That's a change that was, like, previously discussed and budgeted for, and it's just our vehicle for getting that done. And then finally, um, just a request to review some of the administrative, higher-level administrative positions, uh, just to ensure that there are no unnecessary pay disparities between them, sorry.
Can you pull up to that line?
No, I appreciate that.
Lee, any questions?
Nope.
Okay. I don't have any questions here, this is exactly what we talked about previously, so thank you for, you know, working there, identifying the, the needs that would help us get here. Ari, any comments before?
Yes.
Okay, all right, so I'll take a motion to sign the memorandum, MOA between Town and Lakeville and Massachusetts Laborers District Council, Laborers International Union of North America, AFL-CIO, as presented.
Come up, second.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, unanimous, thank you very much, everybody. John, appreciate the work.
Thank you.
Have a good evening. All right. Come on, come on, Mark, we'll go back to number four, and talk about, uh, this presentation from the Town Planner on the abutter lot program, and possible vote, I'm sure we've got questions.
All right, welcome, Mark. Thank you. So, uh, just to recap a little bit, uh, this program was presented, just in concept, to the board about a year ago, uh, when we talked about, uh, possibility of moving, submitting an article to move some properties from the tax collector's, um, uh, control to the board of selectmen, which did go on last fall's town meeting, which was approved by town meeting. We then drafted the actual abutters program, um, which you have in front of you, which you've reviewed, um, and, uh, have submitted it for you. Basically, it outlines, um, how we would sell land of low value, which is under $35,000, to, um, abutters, and it identifies who's eligible, uh, for acquiring the properties, what those properties can be used for, the process for reviewing, um, uh, submittals, and, um, and lastly, if you are selected, or jointly with another abutter, selected, what happens, what's the process for? Putting it under contract, combining it with your lot, surveys, determining other costs to be passed on, and, um, and, uh, and the actual, uh, transfer type, so...
Pretty in-depth proposal in front of us, anybody have any specific questions they'd like to start off with?
I mean, I just, well, I guess to start, if you can go to page two, um, under the what kind of abutter lot be used for? I just was looking for some clarification, um, under, under the bulleted items where it says the public health improvements, um, you know, not knowing what those are, and then the last bullet was septic system or well relocation, so if you could explain a little bit more, public health improvements?
I think the public health improvements really meant septic system and well, well relocation, I think it's, uh, we might have written in during our discussions of what public health improvements are, which is why septic system and well relocation is at the end, but we never really took out public health improvements.
Maybe you just indent that under the public health improvements, so that it is a little bit clearer.
Do you have a public health improvement such as septic system?
Right.
Mm-hmm.
This was easy to follow along, by the way. On page five, under what happens when more than one abutter applies for the same lot, under the bullet, bulleted items, the second, preference will be given to an abutter who maintains their property in excellent condition. That's a little subjective to me, so who determines what excellent condition means? Because if somebody came and looked at my property, I don't know that they'd say it was excellent, but...
I submitted the same question.
You too.
Is there a way to get this more qualitative? Your yard right now is not excellent.
Well, I, I think, um, we have some examples of, of abutters to some of the properties that the town controls, um, where clearly most people would feel that those properties are not in excellent condition, so, um, I'm sure at some point, between properties at that extreme and the immaculate thing where you're kind of a piece of grass, um, there's, there's a fine line where you'll hem and haw over what, what that means, but I think it, it, for, um, you need to have something in here in order to clearly exclude properties that are strewn with car parts and trash and, you know...
Unfortunately, it's not spelled out here, and because it would be, you know, two abutters, two or more, um, you know, applying to the same lot, I, I'm cautious as to a liability that might be opened up to the town because of not having very clear guidelines as to why somebody would be disqualified. I just wanna make sure that, um, you know, this is not something, um...
I mean, we can try and, um, uh, clarify that, maybe add some additional language to define that a little bit better. It's one thing if someone only cuts their grass every few weeks and it's a little taller than the other abutter, but it's another thing if the property is pretty much trashed, and you would not want that person to acquire, you take a lot, and then have that extended on.
Maybe you would if there's still a need for improvement in septic or well system too, though, if there's still a public health improvement in place, so it's, I, I kinda share your concern, that's a tricky, tricky area.
It is, yeah. I agree, I absolutely would rather this whole thing come out, because someone could have one of those lovely baskets that's tipped over with beautiful flowers coming out of it, someone could have an old toilet with flowers coming out of it, it's not for me to decide what's art for some people.
You've seen that one?
I've seen that before.
Yeah, yes, so...
Someone that clearly is subjective, and, you know, the Select Board, you know, will have to make some judgment calls on, on some of these as well.
So this is, um, under, this would be the town administrator would actually be making this decision?
They'd be making a recommendation.
The recommendation to the board, right.
Legislative power being given to the town administrator here.
Right, but if it's between a couple of people, maybe we would have subjectively liked the other person, so I have a real issue with this type of, um, with this type of, um, guideline here. I don't know how we get around it, I'd love to see a different attempt, but, yeah, make
the difference. Other, um, municipalities that might have, you know, kind of addressed this particular type of challenge?
Yeah, we've looked at a number of examples, and the ones that have more extensive bylaws, even similar language.
Perhaps, it's not particularly part of this, but say the town administrator makes a recommendation, perhaps part of that recommendation should be, here's the offers that came in or the inquiries, and here's why I felt this is the best one. Kind of like working with your realty agent, right, like, you got fifteen office for your house, but I think this is the best, you know, one, um, and then if there is something that's subjective, you have an opportunity to say, let's take another look.
I mean, in all honesty, I'm much happier with some of these that are objective, residential, owner, occupant, that's pretty subject, I mean, that's pretty objective, you know? But even preference, preference will be given to those proposals that fulfill a recognized need for that neighborhood, I can't even begin. Now, even this here, preference will be given to those abutters that have an excellent tax payment history, so what does that mean exactly? If I don't pay my bill early, then that doesn't give me an excellent rating, and I pay it on time versus...
Current. I mean, excellent is probably...
Current.
Not the best adjective we'd be using.
Yeah, why don't we just change that to say preferences will be given to those abutters who have, um, current, you know, tax standing?
I had a comment on that whole section, since we're kind of hovering in that area, which was that, um, there's no priority or weightedness to these preferences, so, like, what if somebody, you know, is residential or occupied, but somebody has excellent tax payment history, like, what's the tiebreaker in some of these things? Like, do some of these mean... Like, do some of these mean more than others, yes or no? I think they're all nice to have, some of them perhaps worded differently, but how do we keep it so that we're, you know, people coming back later and saying, it's them over me and I don't understand why?
Well, and even in the next one, and I mean, this is Lakeville that we're talking about here, we're not talking about a city, so this is totally impossible, preference will be given to the abutter who has assisted in the maintenance and care of the vacant lot. So, let's say the vacant lot has some grass on one side, and it's just more wooded on the other side. So, let's say the person on the grass side mows that grass, that person should get preference, but the other person could actually be using the wooded side to create a compost, which is good for the environment. So, I feel like this whole section needs a little more, you know, I mean, we have four different composting piles in our yard depending on the year. We're trying to be more green. Maybe, what about an opportunity for bidding? Is that something that we could incorporate in here that...
Well, you're only going to have the most, you know, the most four or five eligible people if we're talking about abutters, right? So, it's going to be someone who, we all agree, it has to be someone who's adjacent to, that's the intention of the program. So, you know, if all of them were bidding on it, then that would be an interesting question we'd have to deal with. If it's two for bidding on it, then you can probably kind of, because it's a vacant lot, you can divide the baby, and say, can you get half, you get half, or something like that, because they're all adjacent anyway. But, you know, it's really up to the board, if you want to make it a competitive bid or whether you want to, you know, just have, be able to make a decision. Do you get anything you want?
So, can I, may I ask one, because it seems well over right now, or else I would wait for you guys to be done. So, why, aside from the obvious, why are we creating this? Is there no other way to sell these properties? Can't we just...
Most of them are unusable in terms of, on their own. They're very small. You know, you're talking, I can realize one's like .1 acres.
Yeah, they're like 10,000 square feet or less.
So, let's say we post an ad in the newspaper and say this particular property on this street is up for sale by the town.
Well, I think the reason why we wanted to go this route is that we can control, under this, the sale of the properties to direct the abutters, so that otherwise, once you open it up to anybody, it could be someone from across town, someone from across the state buys the lot to park their cars there, party there, and then go swimming, let's say, it's one of the neighborhoods down around the beach. So, they have no vested interest in, you know, in the neighborhood of the community.
We're also trying to discourage those properties being developed.
If you want them to be developed, then it's a different approach, but the approach that we were taking with this that came out of the property discussion or else, this discussion that we had with everybody was that you want to keep those properties, you know, those that are...
I would offer that...
That's a policy call. That's up to the board to decide what you want to do.
Right, so I would just suggest, as far as that comment, that you could encourage, like, bigger septic systems, bigger houses with more bathrooms, so like, someone who already owns the house to, like, expand their own house. So, that all goes to then the Board of Health and the zoning board, so now we're actually creating more work for the Board of Health, the zoning board.
I mean, the way this was designed was that they would not develop that property.
But it can be used for septic systems, right?
It could be used for septic, so your argument would be that if you're septic, then you can turn, further develop the property on the primary land.
Well, I think we do have some restrictions in here that would prohibit that, that you can't really expand upon the redevelopment, and it really needs to, I mean, people can renovate their homes and make them bigger, et cetera, but if you're, but that's not really the intent, is to allow them to build out bigger homes with more bedrooms, therefore requiring more septic.
Right, so are we saying that we're not, that this will not allow that to happen? Because I think that if...
One of them, in addition to, one of those said, can I increase the number of bedrooms in the home, right? It says it somewhere, doesn't it? Yeah.
Yeah.
That's in the exclusions or something.
Remember, the other thing is, when we're evaluating this and you have two reasonable abutters or three reasonable abutters, you know, and they all, will all have their pros and cons, but, you know, that would qualify. You can split the lot and, you know, pass on the survey costs and the other expenses to the abutters, so whether it's two ways or three ways, or, you know...
One thing I wasn't clear on, Mark, was if these purchases would then end up with us requiring the merging of the existing parcel and the new one they buy, or if they just end up owning two little parcels and we keep them?
That's in there.
No, it's required, yeah, it's required on page five near the top.
It does make it one lot?
Yes.
Because they know, like, on my screen, there's like, you know, one owner owns, say, like, number 10, number 12.
It says on page five, "Upon approval of the application by the select board, the applicant will be required to survey the existing lot and the new abutter lot for the purposes of combining both lots into a newly configured lot."
Okay, alright.
So, yeah, we know, we thought of that.
Thank you. I missed that part.
Yeah, that's okay.
And the Form A just references an A and R, which is approval not required, but they do go in front of the planning board for approval, but it's not really, it's just more of a formality. So, their lot becomes bigger. I guess I would just not want to restrict somebody if they, you know, had an opportunity to be able to increase their septic and make it better, because a lot of these properties, I'm guessing, are probably more down by the waterfront areas, and I know that that's always been a challenge, so this would give them an opportunity to improve the septic, but if it gave them a chance to enhance their home, whether it be adding a bedroom or not, I don't, I would not want to restrict that.
I would just, you know, just, my advice would be that you should make all the policy qualifications and covenants if you want to. Important thing is that we create a policy that is not overly bureaucratic in terms of the process, because part of the problem right now when it comes to disposing of properties is that you have to advertise, it's a regular, it's a regular study to advertise out, 30B you have to sell, you know, get bids, and so it takes working going through that process. We're trying to create a process that, like, gives us a bit of a railroad to be able to dispose of these properties and put them in the hands of private property owners, who would put them on the tax rolls.
Right.
I think there are a few elements, though, that do feel bureaucratic, when you start to put covenants on these properties and such, saying, well, you can't, you can't...
We're trying to protect the concern that, you know, that someone could buy his property and let it go to, you know, what?
At that point, I'd say, what are our town bylaws, zoning bylaws, board health regulations that are out there, and then that becomes their thing to enforce.
That's fair, that's fair.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's fair.
I'd like to ask what the harm is in the town keeping these. Don't tell me we need more revenue, because I've done the math.
I want to look at these in isolation, Leah, it's just, it's a process I'm trying to...
Okay, but honestly, for these one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight properties, with last year's tax rate of $11.15,
Oh, it's not much, yeah.
It's $1,000, so I, I'm...
We always say that this is going to be a proof of concept, though.
Right.
And that this is going to be a process going forward over time. Now, that being said, there is nothing wrong with holding on to the properties. The only downside to that is that the town's responsible for keeping them clean and maintaining them. So, just trying to unload that, you know, these properties right now are not being maintained really in any, it's a good way.
Is there any reason today where an abutter couldn't come to us and say, I really need a better septic system, but I can't, but you guys own that, can I buy it?
We have to put out the bid.
Has to go to...
Has to go to bid, okay, so this would, you're ready?
This program allows us to say to this abutter, hey, just fill out this form and with this process, and so that's the concept. Again, it's just a tool, it's just one tool when it comes to, you know, being able to dispose of certain types of properties.
You touched upon the procurement question that I was going to bring up, so this does follow within procurement guidelines?
Abutters programs are allowed under state law.
Okay. So, I guess a little clarification on number five, I just want to be sure I understand, on page five, right in that same area where the Form A is, "Upon approval of the application by the select board, the applicant will be required to survey their existing lot and the new abutter lot or portion thereof for the purposes of combining both lots into a newly configured lot." Do they have to?
Yes.
So, we should say they must, because as an assessor, I actually worked on taking in a couple of these properties, because the folks didn't, and as my first year as a select board, one of these or two of these properties were properties that we accepted, so oftentimes when folks start to struggle, that's one of the first things they do, is give up land that...
We think the town should require that of the buyer to get some lot.
That's what I'm saying, they must, that way they can't, you know, portion it out again and say, or keep it just as a piece, and then say, I'm just going to give it back to the town now.
If must says do right away, will require, maybe some point will require you to do it, yeah, I understand what you're saying.
Yeah.
It's a better choice of words, I agree.
And that, to dovetail onto that, was my question I sent to you earlier about the curb cut, like, do they need to...
Oh, we honestly, we hadn't thought of that, so it was a really good suggestion. So, we're going to, we need to put some language in there about that, we'll...
For others, my question to Ari Mark earlier was, like, if the, if a lot is going to be used for off-street parking, should they've already got provisional improvement of a curb cut before even accepting it?
Alright.
Just to make sure it's doable, that's all.
I thought that was an excellent point, we just hadn't, you know, we haven't had any people in the room, but sometimes...
Yep, when you look at something 30 times, it all blends together.
I have one more at the bottom of page five, last sentence, it says, "The town reserves the right to not recommend." Is it the select board? Because if you say town, that's town meeting.
Good point.
No, we need a term sheet.
Seriously, well, I had that same exact one, Lorraine, so you guys aren't going to be happy with me, but I am going to say this right now. So, we spent three hours last Tuesday morning discussing, you know, communication, trying to shorten meetings, and then this came on Wednesday, so this is the first time we've seen this document. So, we've already spent how long talking about it?
About a half hour.
Okay, so, first of all, in the first sentence, it says, "As the custodian of land subject to this program, the Town of Lakeville Select Board hereby adopts the following." All these things are referencing the select board, the select board, the select board. Is there any reason why we didn't appoint a select board member to this committee if this was being created? All three of us have all the same questions. We come from all three different backgrounds. I'm just curious.
Well, I mean, I would say that we went to the board in last August with the, with the problem properties package, and said we were coming back at a later date with the abutters program. There was no direction provided at that point. We viewed our role as staff to come forward with proposals. We had every expectation that you guys would take this and run with it and edit it and modify it and so on. And, you know, I don't, I don't have a problem with that, I think that's appropriate. And that, you know, we were putting forward our straw man for the board to consider.
Okay. Also, when you're done, Brian?
No, I was just going to say, given the length of it, maybe this is one where, having it a little earlier, we could have sent everything in and then, I don't know, come in here with a list of, like, here's all the questions we got, here's all the responses.
If you'd as worthwhile, we didn't hear, get final sign-off from town council until, like, what was it? Last week or so. So, you know, we sent this off to you after that. We didn't think it would be a surprise, because we thought we'd been talking about abutters before, but apparently we were wrong about that on some degree. But the, you know, I had no, you know, I had in there possible vote on the agenda simply as a matter of form. I had no expectation or intention that the board would overstep this thing. I mean, I think this is just the first step as we go along.
Which I think is fine. I think it shows a lot of effort that go into coming up with a lot, there's a lot of detail in here. Do we have some recommendations or thought? Yeah, sure, I think it's inevitable, we'll all have different things. I mean, where would we like to go, because we've got another, a bunch of other items to go here.
Yeah, I mean, I still have more questions. I don't know, Lorraine seems to be hitting all my high points. I don't know if you have more, Lorraine?
I have one, and it's just, it's just a, I guess, cosmetic. On page six, it's a, who do, should I contact if I have questions? Just for consistency purposes, where you have here information about the butter, a butter lot sales program, it's really a butter lot program.
Yeah.
Get rid of the word sales.
Yeah.
Unless you plan to include that in the beginning.
Yeah.
But that, I guess, is all of what I had.
I'd be happy to interact with each of you individually, you can have another session on the 21st, however you and the board would like to handle it.
I, if I can, Mr. Chairman?
Of course.
It's helpful for me to have these discussions as a board, because some of the things that come up that the other members have might be something that I might not have thought of, and it makes more sense as I'm going through this as to why, you know, there was, you know, a thought on it. So, I appreciate us being able to have these conversations, so when questions are sent in ahead of time, I'm not really sure what those questions are.
Yeah, I sent mine in just to give Mark and Ari the opportunity to see them and have answers, you know.
To present.
Research, didn't they?
Right, okay, yeah.
And I, I'm happy to read through them right here. We don't have to discuss them, because there's a few. We've hit on some of them already. So, I went section by section, so in the who can submit an application, one of the ones was, I had concerns over entertaining abutters that are across the street, even in private, on private roads or private right-of-ways, because I wasn't sure what, what besides off-street parking, perhaps, or stores, they could use it for, because I know we tend to really not like to, like, wells or septics going underneath, you know, roadways. We have a couple of properties in town with shared wells like that that aren't great. Why would we not allow a vacant lot owner to purchase in a budding lot? Because if the two parcels, once combined, turned into some conforming use, is that positive to the town, if they could then turn it into something, a small home or whatever it might be? How applications are evaluated? We didn't touch on this yet, but I asked if there's ever a situation, now these lots are so small, it may be in the future, we say no non-conforming use expansions are allowed. I didn't know if any of these lots would turn a non-conforming into a conforming, might not, so it wouldn't make a difference in either way. I was curious why we wouldn't allow it. What happens when more than one abutter applies to the same lot? I already talked about this, the preferences list was very long with no real scoring matrix on it. Whether or not, they had an example image in there, and whether or not we would give priority to a lot that has more lot line coverage than another one, so you don't get like this Z-shaped doglet lot that turns into something of odd usage. I already mentioned, I felt like the covenant feels a bit strong. I'd like to rely on our other regulations and bylaws after the sale. We talked about the maintaining of property already. Curb cut, we mentioned already, and you already answered the question on combining the parcels, so that was my list that went in.
Oh, I'm glad to have heard, heard that list.
To add to that, I do have some concerns on page four, right at the top, "The following property owners will not be eligible to participate in this program. Abutters who have had property workflows upon back in Town of Lakeville are ineligible for the program." I don't know about that. Divorces happen all the time, people go their separate ways, one person shouldn't be dragged down by another. I find that a little discriminatory, actually. Abutters with arson-related histories, are we going to ask for a background check? I don't feel comfortable asking anyone for a criminal background check.
Fire chief can, has that information already?
I still don't feel comfortable asking someone for it, especially, there's different ranges and, you know. Abutters who have any housing discrimination complaints, convictions for violating fair housing laws. I mean, okay, violations, that means someone has adjudicated it, someone has made that decision, but complaints to me, they could or couldn't be justified, I mean...
So, I need, I'll need to get back to the board, will they get back to the board on some of these, because I think some of these may be legal requirements. Look, a municipality may not be allowed to sell to somebody with some of these situations. I'm not certain about that.
Yeah, I would really like to see that. Yeah. I would really like to see that before I require we ask someone for their criminal background.
No, totally understand. That's the front to do list. Absolutely.
And, you know, a butters who have any unresolved violations of building conservation or health codes are ineligible for the program. Is that just in Lakeville? Is it anywhere? So I definitely would like clarification on, you know.
That does what triggered me. I think that one I believe is federal housing requirement.
Okay.
I, point taken. We will, we will research that from a legal perspective and make sure that we, you know, that we're, that we're on grant, that we're on what our original maneuver is. So the board knows.
Okay. And then on the last page, page, I believe, page six, again, I feel that some of these are subjective. The lot must be kept free of garbage and debris. Well, I mean, garbage is garbage. You know, the grass or weeds must be kept trimmed and cut below six inches. I, if someone's upset, I don't want our zoning enforcement person to be getting complaints on someone's grass not being six inches or less. So I don't know where these came from. You know, all shrubs must be maintained. I think that's super subjective. I like short shrubs like this. Someone else might like, you know, nice tall ones. So anyways, so this one here on the future conveyances, I'm more concerned with that, what can happen with that property in the future than I am on, you know, how high or low someone cuts their grass, I guess.
So Mark, you can chime in, but I believe these are all restrictions we've seen in other butter programs.
Yes.
It's really, these are definitely, unlike the other ones, I'm not sure about, these are definitely policy discretion of the board. So if the board decides, don't want, you know, don't want to worry about this, then we won't worry about it. We'll take it out. It's really, it's really the board's call.
Yeah. Somebody's buying a lot to put a septic under it. I don't really care if they let it go to, you know, field flowers or something, you know, whatever.
Right. I mean, field flowers can be really pretty. And that's, that's the difficulty of making one size fits all policy. All these could be different terrains. They could be, you know, it could be a grassy area. It could be a tree area. I mean, it's kind of hard to make, you know, these really subjective.
Perhaps you, you focus just on the, the conveyance question and maybe that last bullet?
Yeah. I guess the other thing, you know, and again, I'm not a lawyer. I'm not a zoning expert. So you have this person on this side, that person on that side, right? Let's say they decide to split it. We decide to let them split it. So can they each give a little bit more of their land on the other side and then they sell it as a, you know, as a, as a, you know, I guess those are my questions on that one. So now someone, they've given up, you know, I have three and a half acres. I could give a little and that person could give a little and now they do have a lot. So I guess those are some of the other questions that I have on the future use of the, of the land. And I, just one more thing, you set this up to my attention here that, you know, the buyer must begin maintenance of the lot immediately upon purchase and complete all proposed improvements generally within one year of the purchase. I don't want us to forget the fact that we currently own the property. And if they want to just leave it as in the condition that they're buying it, how, why would we want to?
Are we maintaining it today?
That's what I'm saying.
Right.
So if they want to just buy it because they can expand their lot and able to put septic, whatever, but for us to tell somebody that they need to improve the maintenance of the property when they're getting it from the town, who is responsible for maintaining it in the first place? So I just want to be really careful about all of that in there.
So what I'm hearing from you is, and if I, from I think from the two of you, I don't know, you said you didn't, but everyone here from the board is that you want to have kind of softer hand on that question of, of requiring maybe not even a covenant? Or if you do have a covenant, to make it much, much, much more basic?
I don't even know that a, I mean, as long, I mean, I'm with buying on this one. We have bylaws and we have, you know, building regulations, you know, in place that guide the development of parcels. And, you know, I want to rely on that. If, if something comes back down the road that leads us back to this because we might have missed something, then we can always realign it. But.
Yeah, I think it really depends on what the board's policy objective is for this program.
Yeah. I mean, I could see that, you know, any, you're working diligently on the other program for blighted properties, right? So, you know, keeping it free of garbage and debris is, you know.
So we have a list of, you know, we, we have this group. So the board knows about this. We meet periodically every, probably month or two. And we have a list of properties and we're looking, and we're looking enforcement with properties. We've been starting to look at ways to do the lean and how that would work. Remember that the attorney general just approved this, these articles like in April. So it's not that, they're not that old at this point. And we're, we're going through the process right now of trying to build up the, sort of the portfolio and what that'll look like going forward. The biggest benefit so far has just been coordination, having staff sort of talking to each other and saying, okay, yeah, this is a problem, a problem there. And, you know, when the fire chief has an issue, we've worked through. And we've made some good progress on a couple, a number of properties. Old County Road is a good example, where, which I don't think they would have happened the way they did if we hadn't had this group working the way it was working. So.
You know, you touched upon something, Brian, that might be helpful here, especially in this type of, you know, proposal. Maybe work on a process step. I mean, we did this with the chapter 61, land coming out of chapter 61. You know, there's a very nice checklist and process. I think that that might be helpful here.
Yeah. Because right now it says, if you are in a butter to a vacant town owned property that currently is not offered for sale, you may request that its status be evaluated by the town administrator. So that's almost like it triggers like a step one.
Yeah.
After careful review, which is another subjective word, the town administrator may recommend, not must, may recommend to the select board that the property be offered for sale. When the vacant lot is made available for sale by the town, the lot may be referred to the town administrator. So I agree with you. I think there needs to be more of that sort of process.
Yeah. I mean, remember, bear in mind that a property, the town history, I can't just say, I'm going to sell this property. We're going, we would, you know, the first thing has to go through to the select board town meeting and be a proof of conveyance. At which point it's going to be on everybody's radar. We've had other, I guess occasionally we have someone come along, we ask about a property that's nearby, I think maybe town on that guy, it happens. We're just trying to establish proof of concept here.
Yep.
And so I, I don't want the public or the board to think that we're trying to create a situation where the town administrator can just say, I'm going to sell that.
No.
This is not, this isn't what we're trying to do here.
No. And I know the three of us are kind of picking apart things here. I just want to say again, like, I like seeing the effort that went into this. I know a ton of time went into it. There's a lot.
We welcome the feedback. So.
There's a lot of good structure and I think these are the kind of proactive things I personally would like to see more and more of happen. And we'll get there. We'll figure it out. But I mean, I'm glad we were able to ask a bunch of questions. I mean, this might almost be the type of program where in the future, Ari, we consider doing just an individual working session.
Um, and, and I, I mean, I, I agree because we don't want to make a policy on the same subject matter and then next year change it and then the year after change it. It's like when you make a policy, the hope is that it'll last for a little while and not have to be changed. You know, I mean, everything, you know, does change even in town. So some things do need to be looked at. But, you know, I'm not making this policy with just, you know, this year in mind. I'm making it down the road after, you know, some other folks have said, oh, I want to, like I said, I've worked on it both ways as an assessor and as a select board members where we've accepted these parcels. Some from tax titles, some because people just didn't want them anymore. They couldn't sell it as part of their, you know, they thought they were doing a good deed to give it to the town. So.
So, Mr. Chairman, I think we have some good guidance. I mean, I, the only question I'd have is what the board's feeling is as far as the covenant goes. It's probably the one thing that the board wants us to drop it, limit it, which, which you want, you know, we can come back with anything you want. We just want to see what you want us to do.
I'm not a huge fan of them.
Okay.
But if, but if we want to see like option A, option B, that's okay too. Maybe this is option A.
We could just say a term, we could just say a term of the sale. You know, if there's anything on this bullet list that you want to retain or something like it, we can say that this term is issued a sale, but we don't necessarily have to have a covenant.
Yeah.
You know.
And then you've got other policies coming which might help address issues the covenant was thinking it would address.
If we felt it was, many of the examples are from smaller cities, you know, cities like we've heard, you know, all the way around. And so we felt we should put, keep it strong, like those cities would need to have very strong covenants, very strong criteria and those types of things.
We don't think the Bedford approach is, the Bedford is, their butter program is really tough.
Yeah. But we wanted you to have the opportunity to, to back it off. We didn't want to give you something that would be not strong enough. So.
All right. So maybe let's take the feedback from tonight, incorporate that red line.
Yeah.
And then maybe do a one-off session for a second round or something, or see what the members feel like doing.
So, so not at the August 21st or?
I feel like we'll end up spending another hour or so.
Okay.
Going through the changes.
Okay.
But I mean, I personally, again, thanks. I mean, I know there's a bunch of people that worked on this. This is still great progress and we'll get there.
Just, just for full disclosure, the group that works on this, the problem properties group is, I'm sure I gave everybody right. Myself, Christina Casarides, Mark Resnick, our town planner, Mike O'Brien, Nate Darling, Ed Cullen, I'm missing anybody? Erica Correa. I think that's everyone. So that's, that's the problem properties group. Police are not in it because they have an adjudication role when it comes to some of these violations. They felt it was inappropriate for them to be running two hats at the same time. So it's a, early on, Matt Perkins was involved with it. We can't thought better of that. So it's, it's a, it's a varied group. And this is, you know, just one product of that process coming along. It's, they, they're, it's, it's, we've gained a lot, gained a lot of progress done on this stuff.
And perhaps, I don't know what the other members feel like, but maybe the next time we do this too, come back with, you know, what is the procedure like? Is there a form they got to fill out? How do, how do a butters?
We're doing checklists.
Yeah. How do a butters learn of these parcels being available? They might not know who owns next door to them. Is there a timeline they have to apply by when these things come? I don't know. Whatever.
Okay. So, so detail the process.
Or at least, you know, high level, you can dig into it.
Great. Thank you. This is, this is very helpful and informative. We appreciate it.
All right. Any other questions, comments before we let Mark go or? One, two, twice? All right. Cool. Thanks for your work so far, Mark. Appreciate it.
All right.
So going down to number six, discuss and possible vote to sign extension of the intermunicipal agreement for the school resource officer for the Freetown Lakeville Regional School District. Ari, now you did some research into this for us.
I did. I believe I shared with the board that I found. So this was, this was originally not sent to me, but, but fortunately, I think, I think Leah or Lorraine, somebody shared it with me. And the, and started digging into it. There's apparently agreement with, there's an agreement done in 2020. It's supposed to be renewed annually and it was not. And, you know, I started in 21, so I didn't really know about this myself. There's an annual agreement anyway. And, and it just kind of appeared. This time it's the two, two renew it. Renew, renew. This agreement is one pager. I've seen the renewals from the prior group, 2019, 2018 renewals. It looks exactly the same. It's just a one pager. It says we're going to do the agreement. So that's fine. But, you know, technically, the agreement is not, has never really been in place a couple of years.
Were there any comments from the chief? I know he signed off on.
He signed off his firm. But yeah, he, he, and he's been operating under, I don't know why I didn't know about it until now. Yeah.
I mean, I know going through this, it's not a requirement in the, the agreement and all we have is the signature of the, of the police chief. But it's, I know, it's nice to have a letter of recommendation, you know, for, you know, any appointment. So. So, but it doesn't, I mean, am I missing something here? Because it doesn't say specifically who the SRO is. But it just says that we.
Well, it says on.
The placement of a school resource.
It says on page two of 12 that it's up to the discretion of the chief.
Right. Police chief assigns that person as part of his hierarchy.
Yeah. It says in accordance with state law.
And I believe Freetown also has an SRO that they assign as well. And they, they, you each have an SRO.
All right. So if we, if we, every year, in really crazy, I guess we can add this to our monthly, I mean, what does it have to be done by? Does it sign?
We can probably have it, but I think it would be kind of a strong, you do a strong chief there if you get into who he's assigning for this.
No, 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 no. Not till what I'm saying. But you have your monthly, like when things are coming, coming up for.
Oh, when to re-sign this every year?
Right, right. So if this is, you know, a June thing or a July thing. I mean, I would, I personally would like to have it done in June with the effective date of July 1st through the, you know, for the fiscal.
Yeah, no, we'll have this on our list. I, I just was not, I just was unaware.
Right. And I'm not saying that we would need to know, but, but once we agree to this, you know, if a letter came from the, the police chief that just said, we, we've assigned the SRO to this particular person. So then we just knew who our SRO, SRO is.
And there's apparently supposed to be yearly performance metrics as well that the superintendent and the chief discuss. I don't know if those are out there anywhere. I mean, I know we just caught the signature sheet at first and nothing else. It was just like, hey, here you go.
I didn't even have the IMA.
Right. So.
I mean, I, I feel like, you know, I don't want to blame COVID, but it looks like on the last page we see that, you know, I mean.
The chair, right.
Right. Rich and I were able to sign it, you know, but, you know.
I really, I have no explanation for why this didn't come to the board in 21 or 22. I have no idea.
Yes. Yeah. No, it was turnover, you know, superintendent knew. Yeah. So let's, let's just get back on track.
Yep.
And I would like to see this done in June.
Yeah.
So it goes for the fiscal year.
Yeah, we'll make sure it's on our list.
And, and on that last page, I would very much like to be consistent and have it by its select board.
Oh, yeah. Yep.
Yep. So.
Yeah. I didn't, I didn't make a think of that this time because frankly, I just wanted.
Because everybody's already signed it. But just, you know, we'll get that updated. So I guess, you know.
If we can get a copy, this doesn't, doesn't look like it's been scanned 50 times. It'd be more legible. That'd be great.
That would be lovely. Yes. I mean, you know, you can, it would just be nice to have an original.
Right.
I know it has to go to many people to get signed, but, you know, there's inter-office memos, aren't there?
Well, there's also DocuSign, not to get too, you know, high.
Well, that's kind of, you know. You know what? I, I'll be happy to drive it around to everyone's office one day. So they're all original signatures.
Okay.
All right. Well, I'll make a motion that we vote to sign the extension of the intermunicipal agreement for the school resource officer for the Freetown Lakeville Regional School District.
Set it.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
unanimous? Thank you.
I was just going to add the dates.
Oh.
No, go ahead.
Ended July 31st, 2023, to include the school year ending June 30th, 2024.
Okay. Set it.
Was that an amendment to the motion? All right.
I'll add my motion. All right.
We've gone to number seven. Update and possible revisions to the annual town meeting article 14 to recall the elected official as requested by House Counsel. Ari?
Okay. So received an email on Fri, uh, the 9th, I believe it was. Okay, so, um, received an email on Fri- uh, the 9th, I believe it was, the 7th of July, describing a number of revisions to the recall article that were, that was approved at town meeting. I was a little confused because the article was submitted by petition as to what the range of new abilities here. But there was a language that allowed the select board to have some discretion revising the article as, you know, directed by, by the state. Um, so that's, that's possible. Um, Town Council Greg Corbo took a look at the comments from the House Counsel. These are not, you know, they're, they're, the comments are somewhat lengthy, but they're probably not particularly determinative in terms of the structure. It changes mostly change, just clarify some things as far as the petition process and, and so on. And, um, Greg Corbo, um, sent back comments to the, uh.
Comments to the comments?
Comments to the comments, or edits, revisions, proposed revisions, um, about a week, about a week or so later. Um, we did not hear back from Town, House Counsel. Greg has reshocked them several times. Finally, this morning, I got an email from Representative Oral's assistant that said that House Counsel was okay with those changes. Unfortunately, Greg Corbo is not here to present them because he, we've been on until today and I really think the board should have Greg Corbo walking you through that, um, and, um, and you have a vote on your agenda anyway. So we'll plan on doing that August 21st.
Is it safe to say that without these changes, it was not going to go forward?
They were going to submit it.
Okay.
Yeah.
Right, so we will.
I just, I would just like to say that, um, so this is a, a vote of town meeting. If these changes were even this much more, I may not feel comfortable making these changes for everyone at town meeting, but they're hovering just within my.
Yeah, it's, it's not quite substantive.
Right.
But, but I, but I, I'm here yet.
There's a whole lot of red ink on here, but I don't feel like they're changing.
It wasn't like it went from 5% to 10% or something like that. I understand, yeah.
Right, but I, you know, any more than this and I, I don't know that I wouldn't ask for it to be going back to town meeting. And it's kind of, it's kind of, um, not funny, but so if we make a mistake on our warrant, we can't just make the change. It has to go back to town meeting for that change to be corrected. So I, it's a new, it, it's new to me that we can actually, as the select board, actually approve these changes. So, cause we can't do that even for a, you know, some punctuation errors that if our warrant article had a mistake. So I just think it's interesting. I learned something new with this that we can't approve our own changes, but we can't approve a petition change.
I thought, I thought we could. I thought that there was some, when it's, when it's not substantive, it, it, we can make corrections.
I mean, but we've always erred on the side of caution and taken it back to town meeting.
Right, especially with zoning stuff. I know I was.
I'll just suggest, I'll just suggest that we, you wait for Greg's overview. I think that's.
Yep.
Okay, that's fine.
Public transparency as well.
I'd, I'd rather make sure that we are all clear.
Cause it's, it's, it's a lot of spaghetti in there. It's very, it's a little challenging to figure out.
Yeah, and if, um, we can do it August 21st, the warrant should still be open in case.
In case.
He recommends we don't do it and we take it back to town meeting, so.
It's all time, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, what do we say? Warrant till September 18th, 31st, something like that?
August, August 31st warrant closes, but of course, you're the select board. You can, you can open and close the warrant.
We wanted to add some.
And this is in our pack. Apparently wants to download it and see the kinds of changes that they're recommending. You know, it's things like changing qualified voter to registered voter. I mean, it's strengthening the language. I'm making sure there's no murkiness in what it intended. All right, um, any other questions? We're moving on. Okay, and we'll move on to number eight. Discuss impossible vote and scheduling special town meeting for November 13th, 2023 and approve the calendar and open the warrant.
So we, we rimmed this calendar by you last time.
Uh huh.
There's nothing different here. Um, we have got in touch with the school department, school, sorry, the school district. And, um, we are penciled in for November 13th.
Good, good.
Um, town meeting, um, pending, in case there's anything, the drama, the drama teacher's on vacation, so. Sorry.
That's who we answer to.
But we're penciled in, okay? The, uh, I have every confidence. It'll work out. It'll be fine. Um, so anyway, the, um, uh, you would be, um, opening the town, the warrant today, uh, closing it on the 31st. And then voting on articles September 18th, uh, with a vote in the final one October 10th, and then posting the warrant on the 19th and, uh, 123rd. One thing that's not on here is sending, um, the articles to council. Oh, it is there. I'm sorry, it's on the.
Yes.
I read it.
Oh, sorry about that. I missed it, missed it. Sorry. So, um, so that, you know, so we just ask you to, if you, if you're, well, if you're ready to open the war, to, uh, open the warrant and approve the calendar and, you know.
Let's, I'd say we approve the calendar and then open the warrant.
Yeah, the only question I had was, I think I had an ask last time was, did any of the boards that might be submitting articles suggest they needed more time? Or is the, August was good?
Yeah.
They're okay with that?
The, um, the only major, well, this is one article that maybe worked out, maybe been worked on that I, um, talked with the town clerk about. It's not, it's not the point. It's different, something else. I can do with delinquent fees. Um, clarifying delinquent, like, I don't think that one's a big deal. Um, and then the OSRD, which as you, as you know, is being circulated. I think we, Mark copied, um, all of you on that when he sent it out, right? The other day, didn't he?
He did, yes.
I did, yeah, he did send it over, yeah.
That'll have to go in front of the planning board for.
Oh, yes, absolutely. Yeah, I guess that, that's, that's all, yeah.
I must have just missed that one, that's.
He said, I guess I should.
Any rumors of any more petitions we need to work in? Just so we don't have to have like another town meeting three weeks later?
I am.
Okay.
I've not, I've not heard anything. So I, I don't know. Um, the, uh, so the most part should, let's see, um, there'll be some resource items that I mentioned to you in the past. We'll have, we'll have Free Cash certified, thanks to Mr. Hassett, very soon. Um, and just to go to the brief aside, he's extraordinary when it comes to that. I've, I've never, you know, I, I came from a place where we'd be wrestling with the deal with Free Cash till November, December and his, his ability to get that done just blows my mind every time.
Nice.
So, um, uh, and it's a big help to the town. So the, um, uh, so we should be in good shape.
Good to hear.
All right, well, I'll make a motion, um, to approve the special town meeting schedule, um, for November 13th, 2023.
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, unanimously, thank you.
And I'll make a motion, um, to open the warrant for the special town meeting scheduled for November 13th, 2023, um, as of today. And, um, to close the warrant, um, August 31st, 2023 at 3:00 PM.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, all in favor. Unanimously, thank you. Thank you, Ari, for putting that together.
Thank you.
All right, so moving on to, and then item nine, discuss impossible vote to reappoint the following constables for civil purposes only. Richard Colletti, Ian Daly, and Matthew Polkens.
Um, so we did receive a, an email, I believe all of us received it, and I just want to ask that question. Why is it for civil purposes only? Do we know that?
So, yeah, um, that came from the police chief. Um, the concern is the post. The, um, the, the police reform, um, requires constables criminal to have the same certifications that, that a police officer has. And so a lot, a lot of towns are actually not doing constables at all right now.
Okay, but because of that police reform?
Yeah.
And these are not paid positions by a town of Lakeville?
They are not. The only time they get paid is when they serve process.
And that is paid by the courts, not by Lakeville?
Correct.
Okay, I know we had a question on that. Okay.
All right, so I guess I'll make a motion to reappoint, um, the following constables for civil purposes only. Richard Colati, with a term to expire August 12th, 2024. Ian Daly, with a term to expire July 25th, 2024. And Matthew Polkens, two, with a term to expire on June 25th, 2024.
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, unanimously, thank you. Thank you to the police chief for sending his recommendations.
Ian Polk, he requests nothing. He'll have to be here tonight. He's, he's, oh, he's ill.
We can invite him to the next one just for fun.
That's true.
All right, moving on to agenda item 10, discuss impossible vote on the request from the town clerk to appoint election workers. Yearly housekeeping as far as I remember here.
Mm-hmm. I do believe we need to read these into the record.
I was gonna say, if you want a sacrificial lamb, I'll do that.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, ma'am.
You do not need to read the others. It's just the names.
Okay.
Um, you did really well with this last one, so, um, I would be happy for you to.
All right, um, expiration August 15th, great, 15th, yep. Uh, okay, so I'll entertain a motion to appoint the following as election officers with an expiration date of August 15th, 2024. Joseph A. Chamberlain II, Joan M. Morton, Jean A. Dulett, Beverly Ingram, Kristen L. Main, Gary E. Mansfield, Joanne, Joanne L. Correa Uppum, Stephanie Anna Chiarrillo, Francis B. Kenny IV, Judy J. Roberts, Karen A. Keohane, Joanne K. Chupi, Mary M. Funzagliola, Robert W. Marshall, Mary E. Sylvia, Maria A. Peron Martin, Peter Chupi, Cynthia M. Souza, Karen L. Regus, Melissa M. Fitzgerald, Cindy L. Barber, Richard Velez, Karen A. Donnelly, Robin Marquez, Elizabeth L. Nash, Deborah Kenny, Susan T. Dunn, Dale Morton, Ryan Jenkins, Paul McMeekin, Jenna M. Plonka, Bonnie Tucker, Jessie R. Berry, Beth Kilanowich, Margaret Riendo, Martha Peneigwa Mendez, Lola Curly, Leanne Cataldo, Stephen Monty, Margaret Athune.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, ma'am.
Um, the town clerk made a late edit on Lola Curly, her given name is Julayla Curly.
Julayla Curly?
Yes.
Okay, amend Lola to Julayla?
No, second.
All right, any discussion? No? All in favor?
Other than to say, I'm glad those folks volunteer, cause we need them to have our elections.
There's been a lot of trouble town getting them.
Yeah, no.
All right, uh, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, thank you, unanimously. Thank you, Madam Clerk. All right, moving on. Uh, discuss impossible vote to accept the resignation of Chris Carmichael from the zoning board of appeals and appoint Christopher Shidi to fill the vacant term. How many years has Mr. Carmichael been on ZBA? Long time.
Three, four.
To the form of an associate.
Yeah.
Okay, right, yep. Um, so as we mentioned earlier, there will be a vacancy for an associate member on ZBA, assuming this goes through. Um, any discussion on this? It looks like we do have the letter from Kathy.
Um, so I know both of these gentlemen very well and we've been, you know, it's been really nice having both of them. I'm, you know, happy that Chris Shidi will step up to the full position, but I really am sad to see Chris Carmichael go. They both know their, they both know their stuff really well. Um, but.
Well, would you like to make a motion for Chris?
Sure.
All right.
Uh, to appoint him or?
Oh, we gotta do two of these down.
Accept the resignation, okay.
That's right, definitely had, sorry.
Yeah, I'll make a motion that we accept the resignation of Chris Carmichael from the zoning board of appeals. We'll do that first, second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, unanimous?
And then I will make a motion that we appoint Chris Shidi to fill the vacant term. Uh, do we have a term?
All right.
To, to expire July 31st, 2025.
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, unanimous, thank you. Thank you, Chris, for stepping up. Okay, let's see, moving on. Item number 12, discuss impossible vote on appointment of Paula Hool as park commission's representative to the community preservation committee. All right, I see we've got the letter from Melissa, the park commissioner. Uh, any discussion on this item? All right, today, okay, so this is a longer term. So this is July 31st, 2026. Okay, I'll entertain a motion to appoint Paula Hool as the park commission's representative on the CPC with a term ending July 31st, 2026.
Second.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, unanimously, thank you.
I've now lost my cheat sheet.
I think, I think we ran out. I think that was the last one.
Tucked in here somewhere. I don't find it. That wasn't the last one.
Can you scratch it off?
Yeah, there you go.
All right, uh, agenda item 13, discuss impossible vote from the Lakeville Lions Club for a one-day beer and wine special license for September 16th, 2023, rain date September 17th, 2023.
I make motion, um, to approve the, uh, request for a one-day beer and wine special license for September 16th, 2023 with a rain date of September 17th, 2023, um, submitted by the Lakeville Lions Club.
Second.
Okay, um, quick discussion, question for Tracy, not to put you on the spot. I'm pretty sure they already said they've got insurance and all that lined up as usual.
They usually will provide you with an insurance certificate before they get the permit.
Okay, perfect, okay.
Contingent upon the submission of required paperwork, second.
Okay, all right, thank you, everybody. Um, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, unanimously, thank you. All right. Item 14, discuss follow-up to the July 25th planning session and possible future meetings. So, um, at the end, towards the end of that meeting, we discussed planning a couple of working sessions and some of the topics that came out of that. We also talked about potentially moving Mondays to a different day for our normal meetings. Remind me if we made that working sessions we had talked about were land acquisition, economic development, and I feel like there's a third one.
Five-member board.
The five-member board, thank you. So is everybody?
The five-member board, um, I'm, on my, my deliverable.
Mm-hmm.
To give you all a, an analysis of sort of resource and transition requirements, things like that. So that, that's in process. I'm working on that.
Okay, good. Um, do you have an estimate of how much time you'd like before we get together to discuss that?
Um, no, I mean, I, I don't know if it'll be done this week before I go away. So maybe after I get back.
You're back, uh, 17-ish?
Seventeen, yeah.
Okay. We've got our meeting on 21st anyways.
I think I'd like to get it to you sooner because there are some resource implications that might affect, um, that, that might affect some funding questions.
Okay.
So that would be, you know, that would be something to consider during the period when, well, we're gonna have an article, we're gonna have a, please hold for an article anyway. But, you know, just to, so you know what we're looking at.
All right, uh, do you feel there's any additional prep you'll eventually need for the land acquisition and economic development meetings as well?
Um, I've spoken with, um, Mark Resnick about putting together a, um, checklist as we discussed on land acquisition.
Okay.
Um, economic development, um, trying to remember what the deliverable was on that.
I don't know that we set one for that meeting, to be honest.
I'm sure we did.
Okay, um, so forgive me if I'm wrong, but I think we said we wanted to hit the five-member board one first?
Yeah.
Yes.
Um, so do we want to look at a working session after our 21st meeting somewhere within the next week or two? Does that, I think that's sufficient time?
Yeah, I'm trying to get you something this week if I possibly can.
And then, I think we all said we were happy with like evening remote session? Was that what was suggested?
Yeah, morning, it doesn't matter to me usually. Um, I can just try to plan around. It's up to you guys, honestly.
I mean, I could, I mean, if it's in, like an evening, if, I mean, I know we don't want to not have public access to it, but, um, you know, something like this, if we did it at like 4:30 or even 5 o'clock. I don't know, yeah.
I mean, I don't mind doing it in person.
I don't either, if we can all make it.
We could do, if the weather's nice, we could do them in, once a winter comes around, if we're gonna have it. if we're gonna have any, we could do them, you know, Zoom, it doesn't...
Yeah, it's just, if it was a matter of, like, I can't make it, because I gotta commute back to get there, but if we're all free anyways, I'm happy to do it in person. Um, in the week, I'm just looking here, the week following our twenty-first meeting, looks like I could pretty much do any, if you said four-thirty, five-o'clock-ish, if that works for Ari or any staff you gotta bring in.
So, do you have a date, nine-twenty-eight you're talking about, or do you want another day?
Uh... Um, just looking to make sure I don't get in trouble here. Not specifically?
Okay.
Does anybody else have a preference that week?
The Wednesday, um, not, we're trying to schedule the five-station building committee.
Okay.
Um, we originally had said the twenty-third, I don't know if that was, if that one was in conflict, I think it might be, but, so potentially it may go to the thirtieth, but I'm not sure. Think that one's okay?
Yeah, I think so.
So, it's the ones, I guess it's the ones in September, I mean, we had so many emails going back and forth, okay. Alright, so the week of the twenty-eighth, um, looks like I have availability.
Yeah. I'm fine. So, that meeting, you wanna talk about the five-member board questions, is that the idea?
So, what day did we pick, I'm sorry?
We haven't yet, um, and it looks like nobody's posted that far enough in advance to look at room availability yet.
No, we'd have to do some checking, so if you wanna leave us with that task, just let you know what days work, we can get back to you on that.
Um...
If you make it remote, then any day works.
Right.
Just saying.
We can always post the Zoom ID. Did you have a particular day that week, I forget?
Um, no.
Do you wanna try the twenty-ninth, does that work for everybody?
What day is that?
Uh, there's a Tuesday.
Yep.
Some pencil on the twenty-ninth, perhaps?
Let me see if the room is available, or if you wanted to remote.
Well, if it's not available, we can do a Zoom.
We'll see if it's available first.
We'll find, we'll find out. Um, and the topic will be specifically the five-member board question?
Yep. Yep, hit that, and do we wanna hit that before scheduling others? Just in case that turns into a couple extra? Okay, just do that. Alright, excellent. Um, and on that topic, what is the board's feeling on keeping these meetings as Monday nights or shifting them? I know, for me, it's tough to get the packet on Friday and then study it over the weekend and then come right in, and not have, like, a couple days to reach out to whomever, um, but I'm more than happy to stick with this if you prefer.
Um, I'm used to, I'm used to it on a Monday night, but it doesn't matter, it doesn't have to be on a Monday night for me. Um, Wednesdays are a little tougher for me, but I can make it work if I have to.
The only challenge with moving the regular meeting off of this Monday is going to be availability.
Yep, but if we schedule them out six months in advance or something?
Right, we have to set the schedule.
Yeah.
So, are Thursdays out of the question? Wednesdays are very difficult for me.
Thursdays are planning board.
Every other, and zoning board is every other, but zoning typically meets, if I'm not mistaken, at the, um, library.
The library.
So, on the alternating Thursdays, I don't know that there's anybody in here.
Park commissioner, are they in here? They did move here, because they were out of the lodge, because they couldn't, yeah.
It's a recent entry.
Yeah, it's true.
I think, Mr. Chair, that everyone else has kind of built their meeting schedule around us on Mondays in here, um, because they've given the select board much preference, and then everybody else is kind of following in. Um, so, maybe we need to do like a schedule and see where everybody's meeting and what times for, who you guys think about, because is that have severe repercussions for?
It will, it will corollary effects, yeah.
Of course it will, yeah.
We could, if you'd like, there's a little ways from now, we could plan on bringing to that meeting.
The schedule?
Yeah, why don't we do that?
That's totally fine, I'm not saying, like, change them all right now, but...
But that, that might be a good idea, to bring something on the twenty-ninth as to...
It's kind of adjacent to the topic.
Yeah.
I mean, you wanna be respectful to...
Let's go five members on Monday morning all scrambling for questions to be answered.
Yeah, see, that's, yeah.
Sounds like fun. Alright, so we'll talk about that then. Um, okay, um, any other questions on that? It sounds like we'll hit the five-member board session first and then go from there. Um, Ari, you're good with that timeline?
Absolutely.
Okay, appreciate it. Um, any other questions, or move on to town administrator goals, item fifteen?
August twenty-ninth, right?
August twenty-ninth. Do we did not set a time, do we prefer four-thirty, five o'clock?
I can do five.
I can do five.
Yep.
Alright, we'll see what, whether the room's available.
Okay.
If it's not, it'll be Zoom, right?
Yes, that's fine, okay.
Alright.
Just let us know. Or if something else is open, library room or something, I mean, that's another option.
Yeah. Okay, or the board prefer to meet in person?
I think so.
Okay.
I think that's what we're saying.
In that case, we'll just find a room.
If there's no rooms available, then we'll do behalf of...
Sure we can get something, we could fly away or something, so, I mean, it's fine.
Can you start using the old townhouse?
Quite there yet.
No, not yet.
Even CPW admin building.
There you go. Alright, uh, item fifteen, discuss impossible vote approved town administrator goals for fiscal year twenty twenty-four. Um, we are at the end of the first month of fiscal twenty twenty-four, so I know Ari and staff would appreciate, um, us getting these in if we can. Um, you know, we do have kind of the straw man list that we've all looked at for a little while, I don't know if there's any other tweaks, adds, deletes, things that people like to discuss. I have a couple, but we'll see what everybody else has first.
Um, I would definitely like to see, um, an increase in the town's use of social media. That doesn't mean every single thing has to be on there, and that doesn't mean that every single thing has to be on every single, I think first we should, as a select board, decide what we wanna choose for a social media setting.
Mm-hmm.
I think, you know, folks my age are more in tune to Facebook as opposed to the younger folk who are on Instagram and some other ones. Um, but...
I think the clarification that you just said is very well taken, because, I mean, it's been, you have staff spending all their time on social media if you wanted us to.
Yeah.
Um, you know, so it would be helpful to have some kind of guidance or sense of what we're looking to do.
But as making it, yeah, and almost making it a town administrator goal, it's almost like, so, you know, we assign the goal, but then, like, you work with the department heads so that someone's posting some kind of information, I mean, a lot of it is just getting people interested.
Yeah, I mean, we already post quite a bit on Facebook, between the town side and in the departments, what they post, we put quite a bit of information on there, um, but Facebook is an increasingly limited audience too, generational speaking.
Yep.
So, I think it's a really good point.
Um, I know we have a policy in place right now, and I know it had come before us with lengthy, lengthy discussion, um, but the change, the proposed amendment to the policy wasn't anything that we legally had to do, so the current policy...
It doesn't want employees, it's a social media.
Yeah, right, so, I just, you know, I mean, if we're really gonna, you know, look to expand our social media, um, I guess...
Presence?
Presence, thank you. Um, I just wanna make sure that we, you know, that everybody that would be actually doing the posting is very clear, because I know that we all sign the policy every year.
Well, I think, I think that, um...
Well, I think what needs to happen is the three of us need to decide, should this be a goal? Do we want the town to actually, not just one department, but do we want, you know, a little more of a, who knows, maybe we even do go to Instagram, I'm, I'm not sure, um, or other areas. Um, I just, this goes back to the conversation we had too, on how do people get their information?
Right, yeah.
I mean, thank God we have the Nemasket, and some folks are getting some information, but in the, you know, absence of...
What if we, um, trying to think of how we can make this a goal, and how we can measure it in some way, um, what if it was an overall goal of, you know, identifying a, I'm just, I expect the wording to be wrong, but bear with me, um, how do we identify expanded use, expanded community interaction, right? That's social media, we talked at our planning meeting about how do we also get, almost like, scruples back from people on certain things?
Mm-hmm.
And, and give him, that's the job, like, define what that is, how we'll engage more, but not just bullhorning out the information, how are we gonna then take that back and do something with it, whatever it might be?
Sure, if I could weigh in for a second, you know, um, unless the board feels like I have a lot of free time on my hands. Um, I, you know, this is a resource question too.
Mm-hmm.
Um, a lot, most towns that have really robust, and I'm not proposing this, I'm not coming here telling you I want to have the position, I'm really not, but most towns that have a really robust social media presence have somebody who, you know, is their social media maybe, because I think there's a social media presence, yes, a percent does that. Um, you know, we don't really have that role in the town, uh, and I don't think I'm proposing to do that, and I don't think it's appropriate for a town like our size to do that, but there are, but we do need to be aware of the fact that there are limits, which was a bandwidth, is what we can, what we can do. Um, so I think it's very helpful that we can sort of prioritize what we, what the objectives are here and what we're trying to put together.
Well, what would you, the two of you say, the thing that we commonly read the most is just like, I, I feel like a lot of times, they just say, "I didn't even know that was going on."
Right.
Or, "When did that get voted in?"
When did that happen, right?
The school project, actually, there's a few that said, like, "What project are you even talking about?", and a bunch of people thankfully chimed in and said, "Oh, we voted on this at town here."
Right, right.
Yeah, there's, fair amount is shared about that.
Yeah, so, I mean, that's...
Right, and, and it, you know, it also comes down to, do we want to try to utilize some of the groups? I mean, some of them, I say no, because they have very lenient policies and rules, and I don't, it, they start off with, "You will be offended", so I don't, we should be posting things in, in those groups, but, you know, is there other places where, you know, if, um, we can post the town warrant and say, you know, "Oh, today we open", and I'm not saying every single thing, but if you get into one of those groups and say, "Oh, we just opened the, we set the November fall town meeting and we opened the warrant", at least people will say, "Well, what does that mean?", and then they'll go, it'll trigger them to go to the town's website. You know, it's not anything that's lengthy, you know, um, it's just, we have to be able to reach people. And again, you could put something right in front of someone's face if they don't wanna, you know, if they don't wanna read it, they don't have to, but, um, I think as a municipality, I think we, we are doing our, you know, outreach through, because we have set up a Facebook page, I think we're doing our outreach there. Um, anybody can have the ability to share, you know, on any of those other groups, I just don't want us to decide, you know, which group is, that we're gonna post, because you have, I mean, there's so many of them, so, but if we do our job and we post it on our Facebook page, then we can make sure that people, I mean, they know that it's on our Facebook page.
Yep.
Um, and it's really exciting stuff, so, I mean, if the algorithms, you know, will take place that, you know, just like it, and then, you know, following or just...
We do post a lot of that kind of type of information on the, on the Facebook page all the time.
Yeah.
Um, I understand it doesn't always get out there.
Yeah.
But, but I just, we do post it.
And maybe this is a question as well as, like, simple accessibility of information in general, I mean, there's been a number of things that have come to you, and I'm like, "I can't find it on the website, the search is failing me, I can't find what was on this warrant six years ago", like, and...
The search is not...
So, that, that, I think would be a really useful thing to look at, is, you know, maybe, um, not, not to discount the social media thing, but to kind of look at the, the website for potential, you know, design, design improvements. There are, there are a number of possibilities we could do there, it'll cost some money, but it'll probably, but it'll probably worth it.
Well, for the first timer going on our website, that click the menu, which is right smack dab at your eyesight, you don't even see it.
Yeah.
Because you see the list right there, right under it, and, you know, it takes you a little, and you're like, "Oh, wait, what is this?", you know?
On the app, right.
That's on the app.
It's on the app, yeah, that's the, because it builds it down so that you have...
The arrow thing, we click that, and it comes down, yeah.
Yep, and then you open that up and you say, "Oh, oh, okay, now I see", but even like our agendas, you know, folks go to the calendar, they see the agenda page, but they don't see the packet, and they're like, "I can never find the packet", and I'm like, "You have to find the select board section and then go all the way to the bottom", and they're all right there.
Yeah.
So, it just isn't that easy.
Intuitive.
So, is this a, you know, kind of like how this, this is broken up into different areas, I mean, is this another area of, I don't know that it's internal operations, but just like, community access almost in some ways, like, I think social media is a massive component of it?
Yeah, yeah, so, I mean, even community access to me is a, is a good title, it's just, you know, we talked about last week doing a survey, how do most folks wanna get their, you know, their information? So, maybe we take expand community outreach, that is, letter D, under four, and make that five.
Yeah, I think that actually works really well.
Oh, I see what you're saying.
Yeah.
And then just make the last economic six.
And then, um, add in...
Yes, social...
Is that in the web, is that in the website design or something like that, or?
Well, I gotta, I gotta be honest, I would, I don't, I know we spend, spend a lot of money and a lot of time, so you're, are you saying within the same web platform that we have?
I'm not sure what I'm saying, I'm saying, we're just, we're just setting the website and determining whether...
Because we spent, what, seventy?
Right.
Thousand? Yeah, a lot of money here.
They come to us every now and then with functional, functionality...
Right, oh, but it's cost money for those improvements, right, okay, alright, now I'm with you, I just, I'm thinking, "Oh, we'll change the whole..."
Do I have a clear sense of what we get out of that? No, I don't.
My goodness, okay.
Because there's other things here too, right? So, we just recently, or, I shouldn't say recently, we're about to have the codification of all the bylaws too, right? So, that's like almost another thing that kind of ties in here, we might, there might be forty bullets under this thing by the time we're done chatting, um, but I mean, I would personally, I would be happy if we gave Ari the task of, over the next fiscal year, you know, identify ways that we can either expand or simplify community access to information, and that might be...
Part of it.
More proactive social media posts that then point back to resources up in town.
Yeah, I'm satisfied with that, yeah, yep.
And I, because I think some of this is guidance, and then it's up to him to really nail down what do those things mean?
What do they look like, yeah.
Because I'm not, I don't know what they're gonna be.
Me neither.
I don't know what tools are available out there for some of this stuff. And, and, you know, it, some, and I think we also have to be open to the idea that some goals might be, um, multi-year, and sometimes the first is just identifying where your deficiencies are, and then you come back and say, "Okay, now we know how bad it really stinks, how we implement it."
Hi, Mr. Chair, I will say, our current, um, website has modules that we can purchase that add on to what we have, but traditionally, municipal websites for anybody do not look good on a cellphone. They're just impossible to navigate.
No, unless you, unless you go, you know, so I go to these conferences every now and then, and there are, there are groups out there that have, um, different types of apps that pull off the website and will restructure to an app form, and, you know, the same, that we can look at. Um, you know, there's also, um, different types of chatbot, um, systems where you can go, where, you know, you'd like to go and say, you know, "I wanna see the minutes for this day" or whatever, and it'll just find it in the website and pop back, it's an AI thing, um, those, those all exist.
Or even access to going back as, "How did the select board vote on some of these things?", and I've gotta go through Tracy's amazing two-hundred-page meeting minutes to figure out, like, oh, this, that, this, that, right, like, yeah.
Right.
I think there's opportunity.
Yeah.
Absolutely, we'll just keep, we'll keep that on, like you said, multi.
Um, yeah, okay.
All right, I like it.
I don't know, can somebody pervert a table we ended up with in the end?
You made that number, you made expand community access number five.
Yeah.
Yep.
And then you have, and then A, B, and a new C. Identify ways to expand community access to information. And then economic development number six.
Okay, I'm gonna trust somebody's got that in the notes. I know Tracy, Tracy will.
You know, I'll pick it up and send it to you.
Okay. Um, okay, anything else in particular?
Um, so right under number one, instead of advanced, I really would like to see complete. Because some of these things have been hanging around for a while. I mean, Fire Station Project.
Yep.
No, but I mean, God, I would hope that we would be completing, you know, the DPW building, the outdoor stage cover.
So A will be done, C will be done, D will be done, E will be done, F hopefully will be done. But, uh, G probably won't be done. Um, H is forever.
Right.
H, H, H is never finished, yeah. So, um, I could just, how about advanced slash, advanced infrastructure projects complete when, or if you're interested, I just want to say.
Just say infrastructure projects.
Yeah, I, I think, or maybe the, you're right, some will advance, some will complete, some won't.
Right.
Um, I think too, we need to look at, and I hate to use this as an example, like DPW administrative building. We've been talking about doing this for how many years now?
Yeah.
Right, and that's not your fault by any means, right?
Right.
But like, I think when the town comes up with some of these projects, we need to be a little more rigid on, we said we're gonna do it, so we're going to do it. And when, when is a good time? Are we hitting those?
You have, you have, you have projects that were, I don't know why it's not on here, another project. You have projects that were added into the CIP simply because someone was looking for a place to park some free cash.
Sure.
So example of that would be the old town hall roof. Who never thought they could get them for thirty thousand dollars.
Mm-hmm.
But there was, but there was some extra street free cash, and they wanted to put somewhere, so they were very unbalanced, they just put it in the, just put it in that, in that project.
Yeah.
Um, we used it as a match to go for the MHC grant, and then we're gonna get some CPC money. It's gonna be like a ninety thousand dollar project, what time it's done, that we do the roof and the flashing and everything else. Um, and that's what we're gonna pay for, except thirty thousand. And that, and so that, so you look at that project and say, well, it's been sitting around for years and it got done, it was never funded to get done. Um, the, you know, I would argue that the DPW building, either inadvertently or not, is another example of that. It's always underfunded, it's always underfunded.
Yep.
And, um, the way we got it done was through some very, very creative work with, um, your visual camera actually took the lead on to get done, um, to get that project moving.
Yep.
And, um, and now it's getting done, which is great. Um, you know, so it's, it's just, you know.
I, I mean, open what the others think here, but like in, in, especially for projects that complete, or even when we're setting off in a project, I think there could be, again, community access to information, like, how are we paying for this? How much of it came from grants? How much of it was town? How close to on target were we to the deadlines to help build that performance aspect of everything that we're doing? Um, and there will be outliers for sure, things that we can't control, can't control. Um, but I think it would be helpful information, because a lot, you know, we get questions sometimes like, oh, is that thing ever done? And you, and we come running to you and you go, is this still even on, you know, the, the debt paid out or not? It's like, no, it was done six years ago.
Yeah.
Where are we tracking all these that residents can find?
We have, we have, I mean, Todd has a very comprehensive list of, um, of capital projects, shooting status and balances and all that stuff.
Mm-hmm.
He usually presents, I think he provides that to the finance committee and the board every bunch of year at least.
Yeah.
So.
But I agree, Leah, it'd be nice to see these finished.
Find on the webs.
No, it's not on the website, it's not on the website.
And that's probably part of six that we just created, but, but I agree, I mean, absolutely. I just think keep pushing these things forward as much as possible.
Right, I mean, I also don't know that, you know, just stating cybersecurity and IT infrastructure is not necessarily fair. But, I, I mean, clearly we know, just as town administrator, you sort of oversee IT. So is there a specific project we want to see or do we just?
We're just always replacing servers and always replacing PCs and always upgrading the systems.
Yeah.
I mean, that sounds to me like it should be just kind of routine, not necessarily.
It is, but I think it's worthwhile having it, and I'm not overstating this as a goal, I'm not gonna say to you, you know, I should get a super lot of rain because I got this gold on. I'm saying, I'm, I'm saying it should be on there because it's the kind of thing that a lot of towns, a lot of municipalities kind of fall through the cracks and they pay for it at the one time.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So I, I, even though it's easy, well, not necessarily easy, but even though it's routine, I think we need to, I think we need to keep it in there because you need to expect that I'm continuing to push that forward.
And, and the cost of a lot of that stuff throws it on the capital improvement anyways, because we have to.
No.
Um, you know, the, I had something on here and I'm not sure where it, where it fits well. And we talked about this a little at the planning session, which would be, I don't know if it was Lorraine or Leah that brought it up, but, you know, doing the budget forecasting further out, right?
Yeah, that would be.
Yep, yep.
Budget and infrastructure project.
Yep.
Right, we're putting a roof on library X, so how far out until we need it again? Well, that's not a bad example, it's gonna hopefully never again, but.
So I have a, um, well, I'm, I'm working on a facility survey. I haven't talked to OPM and Paul and me, we're getting together tomorrow over Zoom just to kind of talk about how this would look like. To have a more, to have a more informative, informative approach into the CIP. So I'm, we're looking on that, sure, oh, I'm sorry.
Do you want to take a recess or?
Uh, five minutes, two minutes.
Two minutes, okay. Do you mind if we pause for a couple of minutes?
No, that's fine.
Scratch.
Doing a.
All right, all right.
Yeah, uh, we got.
Forecasting the budget further out.
Yeah, I was gonna think, yeah, okay, let me finish that off, you know, okay.
See, I pay attention.
Uh, let's see, all right, so, um, I'm not, again, where would we put that? Would that be under internal operations, strengthening internal operations?
Um, sure.
I mean, I mean, that's kind of maintaining fiscal profiles, um, but dot, dot, dot.
Right, internal operations is physical as well, it is.
Right, so.
Procedural.
And I know that you and Todd have been looking at these, but just getting them a bit more accessible again. Um.
Some lawyers planning and.
Lawyers planning.
And, um, enhance, well, further refined capital program or something like that.
Further refined or slightly further looking, even though I think the pretty well the fuzzier it gets anyways. But there might be, you're doing this fiscal survey.
I'd like to have a good five years, honestly. Right now, we don't really have that in a lot of cases, that's part of what I'm trying to get done.
Okay, so we'll see how that.
Fiscal forecast.
Survey comes back, uh, facilities, survey there. I keep saying fiscal, I mean, facilities, but it's messed up.
Yeah. Um, so what Lorraine had said at the meeting was budget forecasting, yes.
Financial forecasting, yeah.
Uh, we're also talking about facilities in there.
Or capital.
Capital in general.
See, I can't, you can't, you can't do a fiscal forecast without the CIP.
Yeah.
Okay.
And the other thing in our planning session was, um, see how much we're referring back to it? I'm glad we did that, was looking backwards. What was the performances of the budgets that we've had in recent years? And I know we kind of touched on that a bit at the, the reviews when we go on to set the further one, but getting that out there and showing like how on or off were we and if there's reasons for being off why they were.
Yeah, and I believe I said at the meeting, I'm remembering now, this doesn't mean that, that a lot of, a lot of jurisdictions, when you have a, um, you complete your, your, um, your audit.
Mm-hmm.
You'll have the, um, you'll have the auditor come to the board meeting and say, and provide the, and provide the results.
Yep.
Which I think is something you ought to be doing anyway, honestly.
Yeah, and that's something I don't think we've ever really done. Only ever gotten it to read myself.
I think it's a very informative process, so I think, I think it's worth doing and most, every auditor will do that.
And then having it in a consumable format that even I can understand is great, not like a printout from the accounting system.
Right.
Um, okay, so that'd be under fiscal profile. Um.
I don't mean, I don't know if that's really a, a goal, I think it's just, it's just a task for me to make sure it happens.
It's an improvement, it's more data transparency.
Yeah.
Um, let's see, as we talk about that, we talk about that. Uh, and if we just go from top to bottom, we talked about advancing infrastructure projects, um, grants and grant funded projects. Any specific comments on the items we have before us here? Or do you kind of consider that similar to advancing infrastructure projects?
Um, I think it's similar, uh, it's just some of those infrastructure projects have to be funded by grants.
Do we keep a running tally of all the grant money in a year that we receive and use?
Yep, Christine has it.
Okay.
Yeah, I can provide it to you anytime.
I was gonna say, it's not necessary to get it done unless someone else, I'd like to see it. It doesn't have to be this week or even next week, but I wouldn't mind seeing that.
I would love to get it out there on the website.
Yeah, I was gonna say, I think that's, you know, because that was one thing that we said two years ago, that, you know, we, uh, we were hopeful that, you know, with the staff changes, that we would be able to access more grant money. So it really would be nice for folks to be able to see that that has happened.
We, we have accessed a lot more, so, yeah, yeah.
Good. Um, personnel system priorities, um, I know class and comp is underway, um, so we'll look for advancements on that. Um.
D, we can only go as fast as they go.
Yeah, I mean, D, I wouldn't really task you as a, a goal, other than surviving the meetings in Boston. But, um.
Yeah, I, I don't know that that has to be on your goals.
Yeah, I mean, it's, well, it's a task, but.
Good, so we, if we get a bad decision, you won't blame me then.
Well, maybe we could leave it on then. Um, I mean, E, I think would, I, I have a personal interest in three E.
Yeah.
Um, and seeing not just like MMA stuff that comes out, but what professional certifications or things can we empower people with.
I think everyone in town, I think we have plenty of smart people around that could take my Class 101 book, that every person who gets on the Board of Assessors has to pass the 101 exam.
Mm-hmm.
It breaks down so much information and I think we could pull parts out of that that everyone who works for the municipality should know. Every, it goes everything from classifying property to how the cherry sheet's done, to how the, you know, all that stuff. I think there's, I think we have folks that could do a little training on that. Um, our own, our own folks do some kind of that training.
All right, it's not like you're about to say something.
I am, because I think I was one of the proponents of pushing this one, you know, um, last year too. Because I, I'm all about professional development, um, for employees and recommend resources to support. So, um, when we do identify training programs, it's the betterment of the individual with the department within the town, within the services. So it becomes a bigger picture item, um, so.
We've had a couple of, I mean, the past two years, a couple of, we've done a couple of townwide grant, uh, trainings for, you know, there's an open meeting, um, this is a social progression one that we're doing, that we're gonna do. Um, there's, um, also, we've sent us employees to the, um, MA, uh, to the, to the, um, to the MMA, um, financial seminar.
Mm-huh.
Uh, and, um, uh, we also received a couple of grants, some grants for workforce trading, which the highway workers have, have been using. So a couple of different things that we've done.
You know, I, I just remembered something too. Uh, I don't know if this was part of the budget that needed to be passed at the legislature, but, um, the department was offering one or two MCPPO, um, training. I'll have to find it, but it was free.
I have it right here, bring it up.
Oh, no, thank you, that's the other thing I wanted, yes, we are, we are in the process of expanding our MCPPO resources in the town as well.
Right, but I believe that there is a free training for an employee or two in the municipalities. I don't recall where I saw it, um, but it might be the, um.
So I was looking at this this afternoon, actually.
Did you see it?
And OIG is an FY twenty-four, allowing each individual municipality to essentially nominate one employee to go through the training. It'll be two thousand dollars for the fiscal year. And I was going to, I didn't bring this up, Ari, I apologize, I forgot. I was gonna recommend if that is true, um, I'm gonna ask Ari if he'd be willing to do that. Because I think the buck's stopping at the TA's office. Um, not that there's anything wrong going on, but I think it just promotes the fact that we're doing the right thing, where we're doing procurements and such.
So I've done the overview class already.
Mm-hmm.
So, you know, you're, you can, part, part of the benefit, I did that, and I, I don't know if you need me to be, I see if you go certified, I can see the benefit of doing that. It's, it is, it is a time commitment.
Yep.
Um, you know, that, that I don't necessarily, some things would have to give, but, um.
Yeah, because they require the three main programs to be done within three years, I think it is.
It's a number of classes.
Yeah, and then they have associate and they have full, where it's like if you have, I'm quoting this, I think it's like three years of purchasing experience or more than three years, then you can do. Yeah, well, we, we should ask the.
I'm trying to do some research.
Yeah.
Yeah.
We should ask the only one we currently have right now.
Yeah.
But I know that we, you know, had talked about utilizing town council more, um, you know, for procurement purposes, um.
Mm-hmm.
But if, you know, and I, I, you know, I've been an advocate to try to, um, you know, have that as part of the town administrator, um, certification, because it gives immediate, um, give back to, to the community and to our resources, um, going directly through.
I think so, and if we are gonna consider using county council for some, um, procurement, I think it helps put a filter in place where it's like, we just send the gnarly things up that might need an extra set of eyes.
This is what we do now, yeah. I, I feel pretty confident in my own ability right now to, to, to be able to, you know, get you, I don't necessarily have the full certification. But, um, you know, and if the board feels that's important and wants me to do that, then put that on the goal and I'll do, I'll work, start working on it. But it will have, it will have a cost.
Sure.
In terms of time.
I'm trying to remember, Brian, why we didn't make it a requirement when we were looking for, to fill.
I think MRI, I think it was MRI's advice.
It was in there.
It was originally, and I don't remember when it got pulled out.
I think, I think you told.
Yeah, I can't remember why.
I thought you told me it was MRI.
I would have worked on the job description.
Yeah, I'd have to do some research.
I think you told me that was the consultant that did that, and it's when, it's when you told me that.
Hmm.
Yeah, I could try to look it up.
Yeah, I'd have to look at my notes.
Because it was in there, um, for the previous, um.
Yep, search.
It was definitely in there and it had to be right within a year.
Yep.
And then with the next search.
Yeah, it was not, it was, I, I do not remember seeing it when I applied for this job.
No, it wasn't in there, I know it wasn't in, I don't, I shouldn't say that, I really don't think it was in there, but.
I think it was in the early drafts and then for some reason.
Yeah, we, yeah, we, we, we took it out.
I don't know if that was at the advice of the.
Yeah, the search committee.
Search committee saying.
So that we could get a bigger pool.
Exactly, and there was a couple of things like that that they'd run up.
Yep.
I'd be interested to know, you know, so if you guys happen to find out.
Yep, I'll go back and look.
I just, but I, so it was the AAG's office, but I, so maybe they put a price tag on it, because I know that there, there was discussion, I don't know if I saw it in a, you know, in a LinkedIn or, you know, something that was, that this was coming and that they, each municipality was being offered one, you know, to designate one person to be able to receive the certification. I thought it was a no coster, but.
Yeah, I, I think it's like cost up to two thousand dollars or something like that, I think. We could look at it.
I believe it's the three classes, the core classes, that you have to take the introduction, then you have to take the design, building, construction, and you have to take 30B, and I believe it's those three classes bundled together.
That would make sense.
Yep.
I mean, what does the board feel like? I mean, do we feel like that would be, um, a useful feather to ask Ari to go and search up for his hat? Um, and again, I'm not saying that like there's something wrong going on. I think it comes back to like, you know, we talked about our, our, um, the things last, or planning such like accountability and such. I think it just helps put a dot on it.
I mean, I've, I don't think it's necessary, honestly, but especially because we are sending other people.
Yeah, we are, we are doing one other person in the organization who's in, who are getting hers. Um, that's what.
Okay.
But, I mean, you know, I mean, it makes sense. I mean, you are the, um, procurement officer for the town.
Yeah.
And to not have the certification oversee those that do have the certification, just, it doesn't make sense to me, but.
Well, I'd be in favor of including it, see where it goes the next year. If scheduling just makes it an impossibility, I mean, I think that's understandable.
Well, I agree with that.
I would like to know whether the board wants this to be a priority, because the board wants this to be a priority, we, I'll get it done.
Mm-hmm.
But, you know, other things may drop away and I, I, if it's gonna be a stamp upon which I'm a south next year, I kind of need to know that.
Yeah, I, I don't think, I don't, first of all, he applied for the job, it wasn't part of the job description.
Mm-hmm.
And I think to change it tonight and then say you have a year to accomplish it, I don't think that's fair either. So I agree with you that it shouldn't be a, you know.
And I'm not trying to suggest that it's a, a get it done in a year.
Right, no, right.
Not at all.
Progress towards.
Right.
Um.
Right, so maybe that should be an asterisk, because otherwise, you know, I feel like someone could interpret that it must be done.
No, 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 it wasn't, I'm just kidding.
But, um, I mean, just going off that, I know you have your own personal development, because you're part of the ICMA too, right? So you spend time on that too, right? And out of town and travel.
Financial manager, right, and I have to, classes I have to take for that.
Right, right, so, and that's, I mean, I, that directly, you know, impacts the importance of.
I think that brings a lot back to the town.
Right.
Mm-hmm.
So just, you know, there's professional development here too, that I think it's, I think it's important. I've, I've been an advocate since, because Ari and I started right around the same time.
Yep, I was. No, you've always said that, Lorraine, and, I mean, it is right in the town administrator bylaw, that the town administrator is the chief procurement officer of the town. So I can definitely see why, you know, I just feel like, for whatever reason, I'll have to go, now I'm really curious, I don't remember why we took, I think it was to get like a bigger pool of people.
I really, yeah, I really remember you telling me that the consultant said you'd be advised not to have that in there.
Yeah.
Or is it preferred, or something like that?
Yeah, something like preferred or whatever, I have those documents, I know exactly where they are.
The memories, yeah. But if the board wishes me to do it, then I'll, you know, I'll start working on doing it, but it is, it is, Tracy, how many hours is the, are the classes?
The classes usually are a couple of days, usually two and a half days, it's two days of classwork and then review and then a test, so it's usually two and a half days, and they're not close. I took most of mine down the Cape, drive over the bridge.
They stopped, they stopped being remote, correct, from personnel?
Yeah, and they're not even doing any classes this summer, they've, they've held all the classes, so they haven't even put up like a fall schedule yet or anything.
So you all know how my job goes, so having me away for three days in a week, you know, doing the class, if they're, I'm just saying, you know, it's.
There's support staff to back you up too, so hopefully between them and five board members.
And I took the first class down in BCC, so I do know that they do, you know, have to hold them.
Yeah, they haven't been any local forever. I haven't even taken like research classes, because they're just too far away to do it.
Well, maybe we need to be a host community.
I have offered them, I have offered them.
I have too, so, just saying, we could be a host community.
Yeah, that would be awesome.
Happy to reach out through the chair, you can reach out and say, hey, let's host it here.
If everybody would like us to, we certainly could do that, never hurts to show off our facilities.
All right.
All right, so where have we landed on that then?
I think maybe continue to strengthen internal operations, would that fall under there?
I think so. And again, it's not complete in a year by any means.
So what are you asking, I'm sorry, let me ask.
Let's see, if this record grants personal system.
Oh, I think personnel systems priorities is where it came from, identify training programs and opportunities for employees, that's where the discussion had originated from.
Right, yep.
But it, we never, I mean, there's nothing in here specifically for professional development for Ari.
Right. Is it worthy of its own category, or just toss it on? Yeah, personnel system, though that's not.
Because with anybody's calls, I mean, you definitely want to have professional development, you know, something, because you, like you do, you do your ICMA, that's professional development.
Yeah.
You know?
Yeah, you don't need to, I don't need to have that in here necessarily, I mean, if you specifically want, you go MCPo, then, you know, if you have a task that you want me to do, then I'll, and I'll do it.
Okay. Leah, you okay with that, if you have MCPo as progress towards?
Yeah.
I don't think, from what Tracy's saying and what we've seen in the years, certainly there's no way that can get done.
I mean, yeah, I'm okay with it, I still don't think it's necessary, but I'm fine with that, progress towards.
All right, do we want to put that as a seven personal development, or just have that as one item? Because I don't really, I don't really see another great place to.
There really isn't another. I'd like, I personally, I would like to see professional development on every year ways that, you know, it could be.
Well, on the employee reviews, we have professional development.
Right.
So you can put that on the review.
That's true, yeah, that could be on there as well.
Now, if you were to do this past year, I would say I did whatever number of hours it was of, towards my credential manager status.
Yep.
And things like that.
Yeah, I mean, that network of people that you're maintaining is already.
Just to be, just to be clear about this, I mean, credential manager requires 40 hours of class time a year, so it's a fair amount of commitment on that one right there as well.
Worth it though.
Absolutely.
Okay, um, talk about that, talk about that. And we, you know, for the next budget cycle, I know we've got a slowdown in new growth, everybody tell me if I'm crazy, I think we always assume we're just gonna go with a two and a half percent increase, is there any value in asking Ari if they can hold the line at a smaller number for level service budget?
I don't think we're looking at a level service budget, I think we have some considerations on the schools that they don't have those positions, those ESER positions funded, so that's gonna.
That's going to be mathematically possible.
So school's already gonna blow that up?
Yeah, school's already gonna blow that up, I mean, you know, I'm gonna be really upset if they come to us and they say we need an override, because we all, we told them, Free Town told them that they weren't passing a, you know, sustainable budget, so we're concerned, I mean, I don't know if they're gonna drop those positions, but they certainly have no way to fund them right now.
Right.
And I think our own fire department's gonna need an expansion, I know we're gonna work on, you know, possibly splitting it up a little bit, but I don't think we're looking at a level services budget, so.
We've had one for how many years in a row now? Three, four?
Yeah.
Minor additions here and there, but.
Yeah, we had one about two years ago, a few positions, but.
Yes.
This year was very much a level services budget.
Yeah, I still think that, and, you know, I still think that there's a potential to look at a conservation position.
Right.
Being a full-time position.
Probably not, from what we're seeing so far, the tea leaves aren't good.
Yeah, so, I mean, I, I don't think we, I think we have to do two and a half percent.
Yeah, I, my assessment is if we can do it with two and a half percent, we're gonna be lucky.
I would try to overlook thinking at that, you know.
Well, we can't do more than that unless we're not going with override.
Right, we can't do more than that.
I don't particularly relish that idea, I'm not gonna, I think I'd probably do a reduction program before I would do that, so. But to say no growth, it's not gonna.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
I mean, I think what you're saying is more level, level, level funded, is absolutely, you know, whatever we funded last year is what we would fund this year. That's not level services, that's level funded.
No, no, that's level funded.
Level services, it's, you're maintaining the same services that you provided the previous fiscal year, but there's certainly, you know, some increase.
Costs us.
No new staff, no, no nothing, it's just level services, but there would be increase.
You have your personnel no matter what.
Right, well, that's contract and, you know, maintenance agreements that, you know, have to be, your fixed costs that have to be addressed, so just making it clear that level funded is no more, no penny more than what was allocated last, the previous fiscal year. Level services is the same services, but there's still the potential of an increase.
Yes.
But we could say level services with, you know, obviously can't go past two and a half percent.
That's how I'd characterize this year's budget, is a level services budget.
Yeah, so, you know, till we get some numbers, I mean, it's really hard to forecast and hear what the town administrator puts together for our budget for the FY25, but level funded, that's.
Yeah.
Well, all funded's a cut.
Yeah, it is.
Level funded's a cut.
Yeah, it is.
Services.
Yep, so, I just wanted to make sure that we threw that out there for.
Nope, that's good, put that on the term sheet on the website.
No, because we really never talk about that either.
No, we don't.
You know, we don't, we don't really talk about it, we go as far as the, with the assessors is talking about a split tax rate or not, but we never really talk about, you know, putting two and a half percent or less. We always just, every community just says, why wouldn't we raise everything we can? Well, I mean, if we're being conservative, then, and we don't need it, then we don't have to, but I think we're gonna need it.
Yeah, the school's a good example.
Yep.
We have to lead by that example too, you know, so what we do for, you know, for us would be an expectation of others too, so.
Lead by example. All right, so, we try to wrap this up, are there any other net new things people would like to see, we haven't even touched on economic development priorities really, you know, we've got working sessions of our own to deal with that.
Yeah, I think that'll develop its, I don't think, honestly, the town administrator can like go out and do a whole lot of that.
No, I agree with you, I do, I mean, I.
I could, but it would probably be ill-advised.
Yeah, could you find us a vet, a little few more restaurants?
A grocery store.
Go sell my Rolodex.
But I do expect him to be a huge component in shepherding us and getting the boards together.
With the proper chief direction, you can get a lot done, we even get that, yeah.
Yep.
So I think, I think having it on here is good, but that'll get flushed out with some of these working sessions.
Mr. Chairman, can I just make sure I understand everything that we just did here?
That's what I was gonna hopefully go through.
So the, change advanced infrastructure of projects, or just infrastructure projects? Is that right? And then.
Infrastructure projects, I think with a emphasis on statuses, source of funding, completing them as close to on time as we can.
Okay.
Is that?
I don't know, is that more, is that more tax I'm adding?
I, honest to God, if we don't have the DPW building, the outdoor stage, the Gamash playground completed by, we should all be ashamed of ourselves.
Those, those, those will be done, those will be done, I just, they will be.
But it also.
And the, and the school too.
Yeah, and the school too, right.
But it does also to some degree expose that we're not necessarily always in charge of some of these projects, like, like the procurement and the selection and coordination, like, sometimes that falls outside of our office for better or worse.
Right.
And like, I don't want you to take the hit for something that you didn't decide, right, and that's fair. So, I don't know if that's another thing, working session in the future, procurement in general.
Are there any other projects that the board would like to see on this list that aren't there?
I mean, you know, so we have until the end of, what, 2024 to figure out what to do with the rest of the ARPA money, is that correct?
Right, so, I mean, Clear Pond Park.
Water infrastructure.
Um, yeah, and I do, water infrastructure that was, that's on here, under existing projects and grant.
Oh, under grant, I'm sorry.
Senior centers there too, I don't have Clear Pond Park, I can add that, because I'm, but we, I really, we didn't come to you with that yet, that concept yet, so I mean, I'm jumping the gun by doing that.
But we could also say, you know, conceptual design, right, not complete, but, I mean, at least to me, advancing a project.
You could say, yeah, additional ARPA funded projects.
Clarifying what the, the goal is.
I'd say ARPA funded projects.
I mean, you could lump John Pond under that kind of thing as well.
Yeah.
Which I recently had another resident ask, when were they, when they're gonna get good bathrooms at John Pond for their softball league.
I have an agreement, we have, do our agreement with Blueberry Estates, which we're working on, Castle's working on that, so. All right, and then personnel system priorities, you have to cross off D, unless you want to leave it, thank you, I guess. And, and then I have under four, maintain sustainable fiscal profile, put notes in there about refining the CIP and Long Beach forecasting.
Yep.
Creating a new number five out of 4D.
Correct.
And adding, identify ways to expand community access to information.
Social media.
Social media, yeah.
Yada, yada.
And then, and then five is now six, that's what I've got.
In seven, professional development, progress, progress towards MCPo. We can figure out what progress means based on the scheduling and whatnot, because if they end up scheduling nothing, then.
Should I, is it, with the board, all right if I keep in there, maintain credential manager status?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Do you know what that is?
That's what I just.
What you're doing, maintain it?
It's been 40 hours a year.
Yeah, I thought you were doing it anyways, but yeah.
I am, but I'm just, I'm just saying it's.
No, it's professional and it should be in here, because we should know that it's 40 hours a.
Yeah.
A year.
I mean, I would, I would, I don't know what the other members would be, I would support those 40 hours being on town time, and not expect him to take a week off if he's gonna do that, especially if we're gonna put it in the goals.
Yeah.
Is there anything else you're maintaining that we should be aware of that isn't obvious to us?
Sanity's not one of those things. Training wise?
Yeah.
Now, I, the CM's taking a lot of, takes a lot of time.
Okay.
So.
You know, any, any attendance to local conferences and such, I think is.
That I'll fold into there, I mean, my MMMA conferences are part of that, and ICA is part of that, and then my webinars are part of, it's all that stuff.
Yeah, okay.
So I think we have consensus about this, but I would like to see the final draft, I mean, I'm, I'm happy to, you know, move this forward, but it's a lot easier when you vote on, because the document becomes record.
Yes.
And we don't have it, so.
So I'll just send it back for the 21st.
Yeah, and then we'll vote it, but I think we have consensus that, you know, you don't have to wait to hold off and.
No.
Pursuing it.
I'm, I'm, yeah.
I know you're already working on these.
How do you feel, Leah?
I'm, I'm fine with that.
For the final?
Yep.
And they, they hope this gives, you know, a little bit more guidance and, you know, then you can then spread down to department heads and everybody feels like they're working on something.
And then they should, definitely, I would put this up on the web, I've seen that up on the website for other town administrators.
Yep, and then maybe eventually we have that up there and you can click off to get updates on this project.
There you go.
This project, I mean, hyperlink it now, yeah.
Yeah, why not?
A lot of blue lines.
I'll need Brian to figure that out.
Oh, I think this is, I think this was really good, I know, these are the kind of things that are important, that we do take the time to dialogue and.
Mm-hmm, yep. No, it's, it's very important, and I know we are a bit late in getting here, I do apologize on that, Ari, and people that are waiting for some of these, but I know you've been pushing for it a lot of them anyways.
Appreciate it.
I just need to make sure that we're, March, is it March, that we have to do this?
Yep, it should be.
Yeah, yep, March.
Tracy, can you make sure you have that in our annual calendar of to-dos? March, review, town administrator, annual goals for the next fiscal year.
Thank you.
That would be great.
Okay.
Uh-oh. Okay, if there's no, so we'll, we'll update that doc, come back, and hopefully have a quick discussion of voting on 21st, appreciate everybody's contributions. If there's no other questions on that, then we will move on to building committee updates, item number 16.
So.
Senior center for the building.
Senior center, I don't think we've done anything new, other than I did talk to Laurie and she did, I think the last we spoke.
I think we had that meeting after the last board meeting, it was on the 12th, and we had the board meeting on the 10th, so there was that meeting in.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, so at that meeting, we did, I really thought we talked about this, maybe it was last week, so we asked Laurie to put together some folks from, including her, and including some folks from the actual council on aging, and a couple of folks from the friends group to assess what they all feel the needs are going forward, and instead of just one person saying, well, this is what I think we need, so she's putting together a group, she's in contact with the project manager about that, I just asked her if Ari and I could go by when, before their first strategy session, just to say thank you, you know, for whatever, you know, contributing your time, but otherwise, we just got pretty basic documents from the project manager, from George, and we have our next meeting not until September, so at least we're giving her some time to come back with some.
Make sure the needs assessment starts to get the design done.
Yep, yep, that's, that's it.
Quick question, if I may, probably is, goes without saying, but I'll ask anyways, when they're looking at the things that they need, are they looking at the projections on like what the ages of people are coming up?
Yep.
Versus what they are right now?
Yeah, Laurie, they have some good data like that over there, so, yes, so she has some information like that, they're looking at, you know, potential, you know, the growth of the potential folks that go there, but just programming, which they're already out already out of space. So, you know, it may get to the point where they have to give up some programming for others and that's the point of we need an addition. But there is that many people participating.
There's a full parking lot all the time.
Yeah, that's how many, and you know what? I, that's an extremely important resource for, you know, seniors in the town, so, um, but that's why she wanted to, you know, we all wanted her to get like a different group of people to talk about what they all feel the needs are of, you know, for, for programming and space. We also did get a pretty good, because I asked, well, the building is 20 years old and you know how we all accumulate things. And she did say that she and Kelly, before Kelly left last year, had gone through and cleaned out tons of stuff, so it's not like they have stuffed closets and they need more storage space. They cleaned out their storage space and kept, you know, slimmed it down and, um, so they're really maximizing whatever space they have there right now.
Nice.
And they're having to turn people away for, you know, programming on, on some of these things. So, um, I think we're, we're on the right track, but we won't need again until September 13th or something, I think, Ari.
Yeah, cool.
Yep.
Any questions on that? All right, so turn it over to the fire station building committee.
All right, I'll be brief. Um, we met, we had our kickoff meeting with our, um, OPM. Palmeroy Associates, Taylor and his associate were there, talked a little bit about the process and, um, the first step in, the next step is the RFQ to go out for architect. So we had given the opportunity, if any of the members had any input, to provide it through the town administrator's office. So that'll be going out, um, I would say, he gave us a timeline and I apologize if I didn't make a copy of it.
Next week.
Okay.
All right.
Yeah. Um, I think it's going to, I'm not sure if it's set or registered or services. Yeah, I meant to, I'm, I apologize to the board, I meant to take a copy of the, um, the schedule that, um, Taylor had put together. It was very aggressive and we talked about that. Um, and, you know, we were, we were okay. Um, we felt that it was manageable and doable without, you know, anything, you know, being too critically, um...
Before it goes well, we'll have the designer selected probably early, mid-September.
Yep. So, yeah, we're meeting in August, um, and then, um, we'll identify... August 24th is the date that the RFQs are due back in.
Okay.
So...
So September.
Yeah. So, yeah, we're just gonna meet and then we'll identify the top three, um, submittals and then we'll schedule interviews and then, um, we'll select, um, an architect for recommendation to the select board.
Nice, excellent. Did the OPM happen to say if there's, um, have they seen if there's a lot of like hungry architects in that space right now?
He did, um, Taylor did say that there was, um, you know, based on the pool of people that he does know, there's definitely interest in some, you know, architectural firms that would be interested in, in bidding.
Excellent.
Yeah, I, I always watch those meetings, Lorraine, and I gotta tell you, I was like, wow, that is a pretty, pretty ambitious schedule, so, you know, um...
I knew once we, we brought in an OPM, you know, they're, they'll drive the, you know, the process for us and keep us, um, on track, on, yeah, on track.
We've dropped it on ourselves.
Right.
It would not be September.
Yeah. They're, um... So anyways, I know that there's, um, there was actually something in here that, um, that came to the fire station, well, it came to the select board, um, attention to the chairman, but it's relative to the fire station building committee. Um, this was also CC to them, so we'll read that into the record for them. But I would like to just take a moment to just read it into the record for here. Um, and this came off of one of our previous meetings. So this came from, um, the, um, Board of Health. And it just says here to, um, to the select board, um, attention Brian Day for the fire station septic system. Dear Chairman Day, at the Board of Health meeting held on July 6th, 2023, the Board of Health members voted to send a letter to the Board of Selectmen, um, to clarify the Board, Board of Health's position on the proposed fire station location. The current septic system at the town hall and fire station was sized for 570 gallons per day or 38 employees. The town of Lakeville is allowed to make expansions, providing the flow of 570 gallons per day is not exceeded. The flow currently going into the septic system based upon the number of employees working there as of today's date was determined to be 390 gallons per day for 26 employees. The difference of 180 gallons per day would allow for additional, for addition of 12 employees. If the town wanted to expand beyond 570 gallons per day, the Board of Health would be open to discussing options, providing that the expansion was needed due to public safety. And if you have any questions, please let us know. Sincerely, um, the Board of Health, Ed, signed Ed Cullen, um, CC to town administrator Ari Sky and the Lakeville, um, Fire Station Building Committee.
All right, appreciate that. So there is some expansion with the current system in place. Um, and I believe too, if the potentially, like they said, discussing options, if it was a newer system with a higher denitrification capability, that potentially could be something the town could explore if we needed additional capacity. So appreciate them getting back to us and sort of look forward to working with them on this and many other projects.
I mean, I appreciate them getting back to us, but I'd just also like to remind everyone that we're not building a fire station for today's needs. We're building it for the next 40 years, so, um, you know, I, and I know fire stations are usually have more load that they need to begin with, so I still caution everyone on, you know, the existing location. But I am very satisfied with what, um, Palmeroy did say about, um, their work on the site that they're gonna, you know, I feel, I feel like we picked a good firm because, um, I feel like the building committee picked a good firm to recommend to us because they do know the terrain around here. They do know about the turtles and the things that we faced. So, um, I look forward to seeing what they, what they say for the, the site. So they did speak on that, I think, Lorraine, didn't they during the meeting?
Yeah.
Did they, they happen to say when they'll start involving natural heritage? Because the, the turtles and the mitigations do concern me.
Yeah, we did talk briefly about this. Um, the other piece was natural heritage, but it was also the, um, the Parks Commission because it's, there were two locations, three locations identified, um, on parkland. Um, so, uh, I did mention to Ari that we should probably get on the agenda for the Parks Commission, um, so that we can just kind of give them a heads up that this is, you know, we, you know, we have a fire station building committee formed. These are locations that were identified and we wanted to, um...
I reached out to, to listen to her about that and have some dates and...
Yeah, so...
I reached out to Taylor, trying to get something together.
Yeah, so, because Taylor said he would, he would attend that meeting too. And it's, you know, it's more just to, you know, put them on alert that this is, this has come about and, you know, they certainly have, um, a position to weigh in on, um, the locations too. So I, I just want to make sure that, you know, we involve the stakeholders as necessary. So, um, just wanted the board to know that we will be pursuing that too.
It's probably best to do once we have the designer on board to make sure we, so we know we're actually talking about it here.
Right.
It's not theoretical. Well, you know, that we actually have a basic idea of just configuration and needs and things like that. And I think the more we know, the better before we...
So that, just to clarify, so Fire Station Building Committee will get on Parks' agenda? You don't, it's not Select Board on Parks' agenda?
Right, right. And it may be just...
It may be the whole committee.
Right, it may just be me and Ari and, and the OPM, you know, going just to, just...
Indeed, or something.
And reporting back.
Sounds good.
That's all, just in the middle of it.
Um, what was the next meeting for that board? Sorry.
Oh, my goodness.
August 20-something?
Okay, so after our next meeting?
Yeah, it is after your next meeting.
Okay. Um, any other questions on fire?
Nope.
Okay, I think it's... 28th, 48th, November 21st, I'm sorry.
I had the 23rd on here, but...
Yeah, I think you're right. It's 23rd. I started with the wrong one.
Yep.
23rd, yeah.
All right, um, as far as the little colonies feasibility study goes, no major updates there. Um, they're now currently waiting. Um, they expect to be fully invited into the feasibility study with the state somewhere late August, October, April or so, they're expecting. Um, so no real big changes there. Um, did have a short conversation with Superintendent Director Polanski on, um, you know, some of his thoughts on what's going on and, you know, I, I asked him if, and this might be part of the feasibility study, but as we get further along, meeting with all the towns to say, you know, because they're gonna have to go through a process of what do they want? Do they want to keep level services or do they want to add one, two, three, four new programs to the school, um, for students? And, you know, perhaps meet with people like, you know, Ari and the other town administrators, maybe the town accountants and kind of say like, what, what fits, you know, as far as the, what can the towns absorb, not absorb, what would be an override, what wouldn't be an override? Uh, but that's way further down. Um, so really nothing new, probably until late August, we'll hear back about official invitation and then we'll have some ideas on what the next timeline points are after that.
Now, you're on that as a net large, right?
I don't know what to call it. Um, so...
It was a commu, I thought it was a community member or...
It is.
The whole group kind of is to some degree. I think they...
There were boxes they had to fill.
Yeah.
Yes.
So they have to have a finance committee member on.
Right.
And I think you were originally gonna be the finance committee member, but you have Chris Plonka too.
Yeah.
So now he's a finance committee member, which means you're the general one.
There, there wasn't so much requirement to have a FINCOM from what I understand, but FINCOM was an example of the kind of blend they like to have on there.
Yeah.
Made up of other people, there's some other select board members from other towns as well. But that's something we want to discuss potentially changing.
I just didn't know if we have to change your position to be...
Don't think so.
I, because I thought, I mean, if you were at large, then you can just...
Yeah, I'd say, I can ask Erin to get clarification.
Yes.
They did not come to the town.
Right.
Ask us to designate people.
Well, they did ask us for recommendations.
That's true, but their, but their appointment is, the appointment is not made under any, um, town authority.
Yep.
It's not, it's not like there's a slot that the town's filling, you know?
Um, okay.
That was one of our concerns at the time.
Right, yeah.
Right. Okay, we did that. Um, if there's no other questions, then we'll move on to any new business or old business. I don't expect that there's any. Okay. Um, correspondence, remember Carboni already read that, um, letter in from Board of Health? And otherwise, I think that's all we got tonight. Anything else everybody's got? Otherwise, entertain a motion to adjourn at 8:45.
So moved.
All right, all in favor?
Aye, aye.
All right, unanimous. Thank you, everybody. Appreciate it.